All right, seven o'clock time now. I'm sure you guys can hear me better than during the week of all workups and sort of meetings next. And for the evening here, Tom Hesse.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special city council work session for January 20th, 2020. Lynda, could you call the roll?
Dora.
Here.
Cummins.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Minnetza.
Here.
This evening, we have a report from Derek Gatos, Public Works Director, on the high wa- on some high water impacts.
May I be your honor, City Council? You probably have noticed the high water around the city over the last 10 months or so, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on some of the mediation needs that we should be facing this coming spring, summer, and fall. So where we've been at 2019, we approached record levels. We didn't quite get there. We're about two tenths of an inch below record levels this summer. These are a couple of pictures of our efforts to try and keep the boat launch open and to fight back the floodwaters in Harbor Island Drive. The city has spent over $100,000 to date mitigating those floodwaters. Most of it in the labor category. However, materials had increased steadily as we began to, or continued mitigating those this fall, this winter. We put those big bag, sandbags on Harbor Island Drive. Those did a great job at the three-plus feet of water that was being retained from the Grand River. And then we continue to pump those areas down as that groundwater, the river water, seeped through the actual soils and the pavement. We continued all summer to keep those as dry as possible. And this winter, we've continued to mitigate some of those impacts on Coho Drive with the installation of some gravel to try and trespass over the intersection of Coho and Third Street. So today, I'd like to talk to you about the four areas that are significantly impacted currently. Harbor Island Drive at US 31 by Hall's, Coho Drive at Third Street, the intersection, and the boat launch, along with Fifth Street and Adams. And I think most of you are familiar with Fifth Street and Adams and the flooding we've seen there this past summer. So first and foremost, Harbor Island Drive, US 31. So engaging our engineering firm to find out a permanent solution to that area. And really, it's just to raise the road. It's below flood stage. It needs a culvert between Rick's Robinson Park and the river, and the estimate right now is $228,000. Now, we need to partner with Hall's in order to raise that road because it's to raise the road, the three-plus feet that it needs to go, it's going to impact his access to his property. And Mr. Hall is currently planning some improvements to his property and is willing to partner with us to make those grades work and for his operations and for the road. So we need to partner with that. We can't just do it alone. Coho Drive and Third Street is the least costly. It's just to raise the intersection. Needs to go up about an inch, a foot and a half to two feet. Right now, just to get traffic over that or emergency access, we brought in some gravel to temporarily trespass through the intersection. That estimates $82,000 to permanently raise that road and the storm sewer improvements. Harbor Island Drive, or Harbor Island Boat Launch, excuse me. This, I have had questions about what can we do about it? And I'm like, well, I thought the only thing we can do is raise it. It was flooded completely over this past summer. The center was over six inches, had over six inches of water while the edges had over 18 inches of water. And with water levels rising this coming spring, summers, that's predicted by the Corps of Engineers, we need to raise that significantly. Our engineers think that we can raise that three feet at a cost of just shy of $1.3 million. That's a large investment into our boat launch that doesn't see nearly that amount in revenue annually. And the last one, Fifth and Adams, we've talked about this extensively here on a couple options. And the one that I think the council directed me to finalize some numbers on was the, what we called the plug and pump. And that's basically to plug the sewer, the storm sewer outlet at the south channel and pump that water back into the Grand River with a force main. And just to mitigate the intersection, the total cost of that is estimated to be $1.7 million. The engineers came up with an alternative, which would be a rain guard development in that neighborhood, purchasing three or four properties and creating a rain guard in those low areas. That was just over a million dollars. And all those, the details can be found in the report from Aben Marsh regarding that. Well, what does all this mean for the city? Big dollars. Just for these four areas, it's $3.3 million to permanently mitigate them. And we don't really have that just laying around, as you all know. Wish we did. I wish we could just go in and fix these, but we don't. So we have to make some decisions. And so my recommendation to council would be to complete the two projects, Harbor Island Drive and Coho Drive, totaling $310,000. I think that we can find that money in the upcoming budget. And whether we spend it prior to the fiscal year starting, if we can start engineering it, we could probably get it done this summer inside of the next fiscal year. We might have to cut some other programs that we enjoy, maybe some street resurfacing, maybe others, some other maintenance needs. But I'm recommending that we tackle those two projects. The other two, the most significant, the total over $3 million, I mean, I don't have any other recommendations besides postpone. We can mitigate that with some labor and equipment, maybe some sandbags down at Fifth Street and Adams, or we can live with the water levels like we did this past summer at the boat launch. It did get used. We did get revenue. It was about 20%, 25% of what we normally see. So there was use. With higher water levels, I would imagine there would be less use and less revenue. But I don't know if investing the $1.3 million to garner, you know, $60,000 or $70,000 in revenue justifies just as a means. So I guess I'm just here to talk to you about now's the time to plan. If we want to start moving these forward, we need some direction from council. I'm open for questions.
So when you say you're going to, you can find the money in the budget for the two intersections, you're talking about out of public improvement fund or you're talking about out of DPW's fund or we're just going to get creative?
Well, I figure we'd take probably the majority of the $300,000 out of our planned resurfacing program and postpone some of that. You know, it's unfortunate, but really, there isn't a whole lot of construction that we can postpone this year. We have the Fulton Street reconstruction project that's tied to state and federal funds that we have to do, otherwise we lose all those funds. But otherwise, we don't have any funded, city-funded construction projects. So we could probably find 20,000 to 30,000 in other construction or maintenance projects that we can postpone, but maybe slash the resurfacing program.
All right. Well, we'll have to, I think we'll have to do something. I think that point's well taken. Any comments?
It's a pretty big pill to swallow when it comes up to $3.3 million to do the whole thing. I'd like to see us at least get something started. And the ones that you're recommending, I have to agree that we can probably do that in-house and that. And is that going to be, that's a long-term fix you guaranteed or are you just going to wait and see how the water goes with it?
No, those are long-term permanent fixes that raises above, now here's the thing, the high-water mark that we currently have, and I believe the intersections would be six to 12 inches above those marks. So if we continue to raise, yeah, I mean, we can raise the intersections or those locations, you know, two feet, which causes a nice big speed bump. But other, you know, the rest of the road's going to flood. So really, I think, I think we can mitigate those. Those are low-line areas within those two roadways that we can raise. But there would be permanent fixes in that regard.
Working with Mr. Hall there, I know he is going to be putting in some seawalls and stuff on that, which is what he planned on doing. I think working with him and together on that, both of us can help, not only will help him, but it also will help the other marina also down the road. Plus, that's another entrance and exit way out and around, so. I'm ready to move forward with just those, with those two myself personally. And then see if we can get a hold of the state and see if we can get some emergency money of some sort, you know? I mean, also like a DNR for the, working for the boat launch is maybe, good luck on that, but we'll try. It's all we can do.
Yeah, I'm also in support of the two smaller projects. It's at least a place to start, although it sounds like other projects that are going to have to be put off. But have we heard any updates? Some whether the governor may issue a state of emergency. I know our state lawmakers have been pushing for that, and I know we passed our own resolution asking for something along those lines. Any updates or any word on any of that?
Nothing of substance to report. There is a hearing this week on Thursday morning about some legislation that may be possible that could move the ball down the field a little bit, but nothing firm, just that both Senator Victory and Representative Lilly support our intentions of getting some emergency attention paid. Now, how that works and what it looks like, they haven't dealt with that yet, but we're giving them our cost estimates and letting them know that these are important public projects that are probably the tip of the iceberg. You know, we're really just getting started and there's no end in sight. So these are a couple of things that Derek thinks we need to get done in 2020. And again, right now, if we do go forward with it, we're going to need to look at shuffling our priorities a little bit and probably putting some things off that we had otherwise planned on doing in 2020 if we're going to do the Coho and Third Street and Harbor Island Drive and US 31 projects as recommended.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It definitely seems to be the tip of the iceberg at this point. And I know we're likely setting high-water plans as a high priority for a goal for this year later tonight. And I really hope we can get a plan to get ahead of some of this. Maybe we can do some work to prevent some of the damages coming too. I mean, obviously, it's just looking at four pieces, you know? This doesn't include Chinook Pier on the list and those potential costs that we've faced because of high-water damage either. I mean, it's significant.
When the Corps of Engineers was here in August and they predicted we would start the year 11 inches higher than we started last year, and likely to go up from there, so we're thinking of a foot higher than last year. I think the boat launch would be unusable. It was barely usable last year, and I wasn't convinced it was safe to use because you can't see where the edges are. I would think that we'd be pretty cautious about keeping the boat launch open on Harbor Island if we don't do anything. The other thing is, and we'll talk about Chinook Pier toward the end of the meeting, we were within six or eight inches of overtopping the seawall along the walkway there by the charter boats. If we're going to start a foot higher than we started last year and go up from there, we could have water on our walkway there by Chinook Pier, at least darn close to it. We could have a lot more going on than just these four items. And I think we'd better be thinking of everything about what we're going to do about those areas as well.
Yeah, those are, you know, those are the current needs. You know, we can start talking about, you know, the rest of the boardwalk. You know, how do we mitigate, you know, flooding over the edge of that, same area like Chinook Pier? You can also, you know, talk about Grand Avenue and Harbor Drive. You know, if we come up a foot and we have some erosion, we could be impacting that intersection. Danny was probably here the last time he threw concrete in there. That might-
Concrete, concrete, and we had to haul torpedo sand, and that's why you see, that's not beach sand there, that's torpedo sand by the intersection. But that was done in the early 80s when we had that problem, yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like this one's even going to be worse than that one, so, yeah. We put a lot of rock and stuff in there to stop that, but, you know, like you said, I don't know where the water level is going to stop. I don't think anybody does, really. I think they project what's going to happen, but nobody really knows for sure, so. I agree, you know, that we need to do something. And I'm also okay with those two projects, those roads that we're doing, Coho and by Hall Marina there. I think that we have to do that. I don't like putting off the roadwork, but I guess we can talk about that for the next fiscal year and talk about that when budget time comes, so. But I think the primary thing right now to do is to go ahead and take care of by that Hall Marina and Coho. As far as the parking lot, I don't, I'm not interested in doing that right now. That's way over our, that's the top of, that's way over the top, I think, so. But, yeah. But Coho Drive, I think we need to keep that open. I think we need to keep the road open by Hall Marine. And, yeah, I hope you get it high enough that if the water levels keep going, it's still stayed dry. So it's going to be, like you said, a lot of work and expensive work, so, yeah. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
The one thing you should be, we should be looking at also is remediating the water for our citizens down there on Fifth and Adams. So if we can look for any kind of assistance of any sort whatsoever to help us keep that going, don't stop on that part, that is pretty important for them.
We got some ideas that we might be able to deploy internally, in-house. So we'll definitely help them out as much as possible.
Just want to keep that in back so we can move forward on it then. Thank you. Mike?
Derek, appreciate the presentation and the work you've put into it. I too agree that those two areas are probably ones we should keep to the forefront, providing some other ones don't pop up between now and then.
Right.
But in the meanwhile, I support getting those two areas taken care of as well. I don't, like I say, nobody's got a crystal ball, so where this ends up, these could be minor compared to, you know, some of the other ones that were brought up. But for now, good to go.
So Mayor Minnetza, you mentioned that we should be looking in the future, and we already have engaged our engineers to try and look into the crystal ball and see what would happen if the water levels rise, you know, three inches, six inches, a foot. You know, some of the scenarios, they don't play out very nicely.
No, they don't.
And I don't know if anybody wants a two-foot, you know, walled it on, you know, seawall above the existing boardwalk, you know, along the riverside, or whether or not that would even hold, you know, long-term. But, you know, those are, you know, those are some of the realistic solutions to a problem like that. We'll look into it, so we'll be prepared. I don't think we can afford to lose an intersection like Grand Avenue Harbor Drive. So maybe you might have to prioritize some of those with other sliding and others elevating on that list, so.
Well, yeah, and I agree with the rest of the council. The two intersections you talked about need to be taken care of because, for no other reason, because emergency vehicles use them. And it's basically the how you circulate on Harbor Island, so, you know, we need to move forward with those, and that's something we can realistically do. When Pat talks about hearings in Lansing and trying to round up money and help for lake shore communities, because it's not just us, it's all the lake shore communities, the focus always seems to be on people's homes who are falling into the lake because the shoreline's been eaten up by storms and high water and waves. But a greater impact to the general public are these infrastructure issues where roads are washing away and neighborhoods are becoming inundated. And with projected high water, it's a very broad impact for whole communities. So I want people to understand that we're not just looking at individual homes or individual cottages or anything like that. It's a massive impact, and it's going to be over a large area. So hopefully, people start taking this more seriously. I mean, we certainly are because our face is in it.
Yeah, we recently received a letter from Eagle from the state asking what those high-water levels are impacting us, whether it's through our water treatment plants or wastewater treatment plants or infiltration in our sewer systems, all of those. So we'll be able to respond to them. They've asked us, these communities, to participate in that, and I think that those are beneficial to everybody, so the state knows what those needs really are.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Only about 10 minutes remaining, and Pat has his hand up.
Yeah, just to, as long as you got a little time on this, I did look up some of the things that are going on in Lansing this week. Senator Victory has introduced Senate Bill 714, which would allow for those in areas at risk from erosion to accelerate the permitting process. Currently, it takes weeks and weeks for Eagle to look at permits and make a decision, and we may be in a situation here, many property owners may be in a situation where we can't afford to go through a very lengthy review process where we might want to let them move more quickly. So he's, you know, I think Eagle's been receptive to that sort of, you know, shortening up the period of review. But I think Senator Victory is hoping to introduce legislation just to make sure that it happens. You know, a legislative act could cause that to happen in the event the administration doesn't speed those things up. Representative Lilly has also introduced companion legislation in the House. Same thing that the, during a state of emergency declared by the governor, that the soil erosion permits could be expedited. Also, Representative Joe Tate has introduced a resolution to ask the President and Congress to increase funding for the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative to $475 million. And I don't know what that's from, you know, but I'm thinking it must be a big leap, you know, that we're asking for more money from the federal government. And then finally, Representative Lilly is introducing a resolution to ask the governor to formally request that Ontario cease or limit redirection of water into the Great Lakes. So, you know, anything we might do might be forwarded by whatever they might be doing across the border, and I guess the governor's the only one that can make that request of a neighboring province to somehow redirect runoff. And apparently, last time in the 80s when we had the high-water issues, that's something that I imagine then Millican, Governor Millican, asked the province of Ontario to do their best to keep the water from going into the Great Lakes. You know, there's, we're only half, half the problem and half the solution, I guess. You know, we have to work with our neighbors. And finally, that hearing this week is going to be on Thursday, January 23rd at 10:30. And the Army Corps, the Eagle Municipal League, and others will be offering testimony at the House hearing to consider all the different high-water impacts that are going on around the state and what's being done or what can be done. So, you know, there are comparable discussions to what we're doing at the state level, but, like Derek said, a lot of the things you might think are, pollutions could be, you know, sometimes the cure can be as bad as the disease, you know? And we don't want to spend, you know, Mike Dora pointed out that, you know, we might get started on some of these projects, and right when we're getting started with the planning of them, two or three other things come up that prove to be more urgent. You know, there are some things that could be more directly public safety-related that suddenly become something that jumps right to the top of the list. So we'll stay on top of things day to day as they unfold. And I went out and did a survey on our city manager's listserv and got about a half dozen local governments over the weekend to send me information about the types of things that they're facing, very similar to what we're looking at. You know, our numbers this year from the high-water impacts that we've identified, you know, go into the north of $5 million already that we're looking at, and our annual budget's just over $10 million. So obviously, these are things we're not going to be able to fix on our own in the short term. We've identified them, we're working with them. And tonight on your agenda, you're dealing with some high-water impact decisions that you have to make about a city building that you have that is at risk, and we need to do something immediately. We can't wait until this discussion continues at the state and federal level. So just wanted to give you that update on what's going on in Lansing, and I'm sure there's more to done. Today, Congressman Bill Heisenberg was in town, and he made a presentation at the Grand Haven Rotary Club. And while I expected the topics to maybe be Iran or the impeachment or those sorts of things, the number one thing he talked about were high-water impacts and what's the big discussion in Washington. He said that's the number one thing that they're talking about right now at the federal level. So all of these things give me great hope. You know, it's not just in city halls and township halls and village halls, it's also being discussed in Lansing and in Washington, and there's no, nobody's trying to duck behind anything or skirt the issue. You know, it's pretty clear to all of us that this is urgent, and, you know, us in the Great Lakes are probably facing some pretty immediate consequences if we don't come up with some solutions in 2020.
Right, thanks. I am concerned, as I mentioned when Derek was up, I'm concerned about the safety of continuing use of the boat launch if water gets higher than it was this past summer. So let's make sure we keep on top of that. Well, we have five minutes left in our work session time, and if there's no, did you want to try to cover anything else?
Well, you know, the topics that we are going to cover under the city manager report tonight have to do with Chinook Pier and giving you just an update on the condition of the buildings there, so we could maybe just start in on that for five minutes or...
I think I'd rather keep that as one conversation instead of having hours between them. So let's hold that until the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So let's take our last five minutes, and we'll take a break. So we're going to adjourn the special work session, and in five minutes, we will come back for a regular city council meeting. All right, welcome everybody for the regular city council meeting for January 20th of 2020. We just concluded our work session. Now we're going to start our regular meeting. Pat, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dora?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Minnetza?
Here.
For our invocation, we have Dr. Hans Bernard, Senior Pastor Robinson Baptist Church. If you would please all rise and then following the invocation, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O Lord, our God, we are grateful that this solemn hall sought a minister of yours to implore your favorable attention and invoke your gracious direction in their deliberations tonight. Just as I humbly stand as your representative to beset you on their behalf, so do they sit as representatives of the people, the people who have elected them to fulfill these significant duties with which they are entrusted. Rescue the moments ahead from the pride of self-importance, from the routine of familiarity, from the rigidity of convention, and from the rivalry of partisanship. May these men and women, who are no less feeble than the rest of the constituency of this great county, be granted wisdom surpassing their years, their experience, their academia, and even greater than their best efforts. We calling the exhortation of the Vice President of our beloved country. We entreat you according to the promise which you have made and which we heartedly claim, that if your people, who are called by your name, will humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn from their wicked ways, then you will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and heal their land. At this moment, at least, we are praying and seeking your face. May the deliberations that follow create the venues and avenues for the rest to be fulfilled. All, O Lord, to your glory alone and for Jesus's sake. Amen. Thank you.
Do you see the flag of the United States of America? And we do declare the Lord your champion, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no appointments or presentations?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, so we are to the approval of the consent of regular agendas.
Yes, sir. I've got one request tonight. I would like to ask if you could move up the, on the public hearings, if we could take items A, B, and C, which are a public hearing on our Parks and Recreation Plan, and move those down to items G, H, and I, and move the other two public hearings up. Just in the interest, I think we have a considerable audience here tonight for those last two public hearings. If we could move those up ahead, I think we could make more people happy that way.
All right. Is there any objection on council?
No.
Okay. Anything, anything else? Anything additional?
Just a point of clarification is the, so we're going to do two separate hearings, one on the proposed zoning ordinance, then another on the regulatory ordinance?
Yeah.
Or are we going to, or should those be combined and just take comments on them, you know, as a whole? It'd be two separate comment periods.
We have it on our agendas, two separate items, because they'd be two separate ordinances. My belief is that most people coming to comment will not distinguish between the two and will tell us what they think about both at the same time.
That's my concern.
I don't have any intention of correcting anyone if they wish to do that. But we will, it's on the agenda as two public hearings and then there is, and just so we all understand how this would work, we have a public hearing, which we will take comment from the public, three minutes to speak each, which is similar to what we do for our call to the audience. And then after taking comment from the public, we will close the public hearing. There is a, there is an introductory resolution on the agenda for both of these items. And if the, we have these on here so that we have the option of discussing them as a council, because we don't have a motion and a second, we're not entitled to discuss the item under our rules. We also have the option of postponing action tonight, so we don't have to take action. But that is how our agenda is set up. So there'll be two public hearings, two opportunities to do introductory resolutions. And whether or not we take action tonight would be the will of the council. Is that clear? And as I said, you know, I will deal with the zoning amendment first and the regulatory amendment, or the regulatory ordinance second. And if people choose to comment on one or the other, we're listening. So that's how it'll work.
Or they could comment on both.
Or they will probably comment on both, because I think that's how people will approach it.
All right.
Any questions? So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
No second.
Okay. Motion by Dora, second by Fritz, to approve the agenda as adjusted.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. All right, so next item of business is the call to the audience. This is one of two opportunities. This time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing council will come to the podium, speak directly to the mayor, must identify themselves by name and address, and will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, will not have a response at this time. This is not the public hearing, so if you have something else to talk about, if you want to talk about the public hearing, why don't you hold that for the public hearing?
My name is Stuart Wallmer. I'm a general contractor many years and was asked by Councilman Scott to review the Chinook Pier situation. Friday the 10th of January, I met the mayor and many employees out there with my crew. We went through and created four options for the council and city to consider. The fourth option, we deleted. You'll see in the cover letter I'm presenting today. And I priced the three other options, and it's certainly for your discussion. And that's all I have to say. I don't, I can have opinions at later dates, but you can read my documents and discuss it later. So may I pass those out now?
Why don't you give them to Linda?
Okay.
And thank you for doing this. Well, thank you. I may need it.
Thank you, Stu.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the call to the audience and we will go on to the consent agenda. Linda, could you read that?
Our first item is to approve the special work session and regular council meeting minutes of January 6th, 2020. Approve the bills memo in the amount of $865,468.59. Accept a grant agreement from the Grand Haven Area Community Foundation's Technical Assistance Fund for Depot Renovation Preliminary Design Services in the amount of $10,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Accept a low bid in the amount of $554,394 from Sutfin Apollo Fire Equipment for the purchase of a 2020 engine pumper truck and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve a license agreement with Sun Sports Rentals to operate the city beach vending space and perform restroom maintenance during the 2020 summer season with a total seasonal rate of $3,300 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. And approve the Grand Haven Cycle Boat License Agreement with the term of April 1st, 2020 through October 31st, 2024 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Okay, motion by Fritz, second by Cummins. Questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Just a couple of quick things, just in the minutes under the council report. My report says Councilmember Scott, so it's a change there. And then on the Grand Haven Cycle Boat License, the hours of operation currently reads 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. I think that should say 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. So other than that, nothing else?
Yeah. Anything else? Are we ready to vote?
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next item will be to open a public hearing on the introductory resolution for the zoning piece. I'll open the public hearing at this time. There are, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, there are two public hearings associated with medical marijuana topic. One is that we are adjusting the zoning to create these new uses in certain districts with special land use provisions. And after this, we'll have a public hearing on the regulatory piece. So at this point, I would invite members of the audience to come forward. We'll give you three minutes. Because of the large numbers of people here, I'll ask you to stick to the three minutes of comment time. And so if you, if we get to that three minutes, I may have to ask you to wrap it up. So, but please identify yourself by name and address.
Father Chuck Schwartz, 823 Fulton Avenue, 920 Fulton is the address of the church. I'd just like to ask the council to consider the, I know that the state of Michigan asks for a 1,000-foot restriction or buffer around schools for medical marijuana facilities. And as far as I know, that's the only, that's the only thing that was being proposed as far as a restriction or a buffer. I'm just asking the council to consider increasing that, or extending that, rather, to other organizations such as daycares, places that do recovery work, Narcotics Anonymous and other things of that nature, and then as well as churches. And part of my reasoning for asking that is, well, if we're going to, if we're going to create a buffer for the kids while they're in school, I think we should also do the same for them while they're in daycare. Those who are already struggling with addictions of substances, and not necessarily just marijuana, but not just marijuana in general, but wanting to protect those, the most vulnerable of our population that we seek to serve, and then particularly churches, because we end up serving both of those populations. I myself at St. Patrick's St. Anthony Parish, while I wouldn't say we run a school by any means, but we have about 200, 230 students who come in to our building for different education opportunities for faith formation and things like that, as well as then serving some of the, some more vulnerable population, having AA meetings as well as NA meetings and that. So again, asking for that restriction. Now, all of that being said, what's not being said is that there isn't a way that the restrictions and providing space for medical marijuana facilities, I think that both of these can be accomplished. I was at the Planning Commission meeting in December and saw that if we were to apply a 1,000-foot restriction to all churches in the area, it'd leave very, very little real estate if we were to apply that to all of the churches. But I'm wondering what a 500-foot buffer would look like, still providing space for medical marijuana facilities, and then still doing what we can for students as well as vulnerable populations. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Who's next?
Denny Dryer, 220 and a half, Washington, Grand Haven. I want to thank you for handling this in a timely and intelligent manner. Thank you. I would ask that, from what I've seen of the ordinance so far, I would love to see you open it up to east, the Old Town area, especially the key streets, if you could. The other thing that I've noticed, I've been working with this for about a year and a half, two years now, and the parking for one per 150 square feet is rather heavy. You might knock that back down to something closer to one every 250 feet. But I would love to see an area on the east end of Old Town at Jackson that would be available for provisioning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Joanne Query, and I live not too far from here on Lake Avenue, kind of near the cemetery and Duncan Woods and all. I want, I'd like to speak with you this evening, and I thank you for this time for this hearing, because I'd like to speak with you as a neighbor who's lived next door to a marijuana grow, processing, and selling property for four years, since 2015. And it's difficult. It's been difficult for Jim and I to be neighbors of this property. We are zoned a residential neighborhood, but yet this property has had a full-fledged marijuana grow, processing, and selling operation since 2015. So especially as my husband, family, and I enjoy being outdoors in the summer, and we have a lot of visitors come to the Lake Avenue, Elizabeth Street area, it's been difficult to be outside at times. According to some of the notes, and again, I'm scratching these things on anything I have close to my hands since 2015, this lists over 58 times we've had to leave outside our home and go inside, or times at night. We don't have air conditioning in our old home, so we open all our windows and, you know, hope for the lake breezes. Well, since 2015, on many of those summer and fall nights, we're not getting lake breezes. We're getting heavy skunk vapors and chemical vapors. So since 2015, Jim and I have shared these concerns with our compliance office and our officers. And so we've kept track of that, and we've been in communication. And we've had wonderful support from city staff, but to some extent, their hands have been tied. So during this process, we've had not just the vapors, both for chemical processing as well as whatever else happens with marijuana. We've had heavy vehicle traffic. We've had individuals knocking at our door or coming in our driveway asking if we're selling the stuff. We've had odd cars. We have midnight scooters. We have constant UPS and FedEx trucks up and down in a heavily residential area, seven days a week. Often, it's the most busy on Sunday afternoons and Sunday evenings. At times, cars and campers are parked for weeks at a time along our property due to activities at the growing and processing home. During the summer since 2015, we have During the summer since two thousand fifteen, we have not been able, again, to be outside that often, and family has questioned us, well, why does the city allow this? So again, I've worked with our compliance officer and our Ms. Jennifer, and they're, they promised me they're doing as much as they can. And my only resort at times has been to call Public Safety. So, and then they come out and kind of break things up or check on things. So our neighborhood, as many of our neighborhoods are, we're multi-generational. There's many walkers and many visitors in this area, and there are people who love the outdoors. There's children riding bicycles all around, there's babies being strollered to the beach. And then when-
Joanne, can you come, can you, are you about done?
I'm almost done, yeah, I have one more sentence. So when the processing is going on, you know, you're enveloped in all this. So we, Jim and I want to respect the Michigan law, we respect that, but we are appealing to you in a residential neighborhood that we have a commercial operation going on. So we ask you to work with your ordinances to restrict that. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Sarah Luna, four twenty-seven North Sixth Street, my daughter Bree, from the same address. I have been blessed and privileged to not only reside in this beautiful community, but also to own the property known as, excuse me, Dids Deli for the last thirty-eight years. My daughter Bree and I have run Dids Deli together for the last twenty. The time has come for me to retire and for Bree to start the next chapter of her life. I hope, our hope has been to find someone with the capabilities to take what we've built here on our corner and take it to another level. Although the business and building have been for sale for several years, entrepreneurs want a more modern venue. We do not want to get to a point where we must shut down our business and support an empty building. We are the only corner in this area that remains in its vintage state. Grand Landing, Wendy's, Elliot Street, and Jackson have all been repurposed and revamped with new business, modern housing, and all the infrastructure put in place to support growth. We are housed in a building that is one hundred-plus years old. We are teaming up with the property owners next to Dids on the west and on the south with architect Dennis Dryer to propose a possible location for a medical marijuana facility. We feel that turning Dids Deli and the adjacent properties into a medical marijuana site will only enhance our corner, provide much-needed help to people in medical need. We all feel this is a perfect location for this type of facility, we're a safe distance from the library, and there are no churches nor daycares in our immediate area. Dids has always been a business, never a homestead. This is an opportunity to enhance and modernize the gateway to our downtown. It only seems like the natural next step to draw people to the city of Grand Haven. We sincerely request that City Council consider adding Jackson Street a key street back on the map for a possible location for a medical marijuana provisionary. Please help us transition this corner and leave it a healing corner. Also, there's a reason it's called Old Town, it's old. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jerry McHale, twelve thirty-five Slaton. When this whole medical marijuana thing happened, I thought that Grand Haven, like many of our neighbors in Ottawa County, decided that this was not something that we wanted in our city. And I thought that that was a good position, since the promises of all the money we would make was far outweighed by the problems that it would cause. But for some reason, council members suggested that we take a look at medical marijuana, and after months of study, here we are with decisions to make as to where these facilities would be allowed, how many places should have safe zones around them. I see all the work that has been done, the amount of staff and Planning Commission hours spent, when I think that we could be hard, hard-pressed to answer how this is going to make Grand Haven a better city for our citizens and visitors alike. When I look at the other problems we're being faced with, such as Chinook Pier and the high water levels destroying houses, roads, parking lots, and docks, as we heard Derek earlier, it seems that those are needing our full attention. Now it's up to City Council, as the guardians of the city, to make final determination of the rules that they want to set. I was at Planning Commission when Father Chuck asked if churches and youth centers would be provided buffer zones, and he was denied at that point. But I think it's very important to provide protection for a variety of facilities that should not have medical marijuana facilities nearby. One of the reasons I felt Grand Haven was not ever a good candidate for these facilities being considered, as in this ordinance, is exactly because we are a built-out city with little space for buffer zones. If the state deems schools worthy of protection, then there are other places just as important, such as churches, daycare centers, parks, homeless shelters, drug treatment facilities that need buffer zones around them, and I'm glad that City Council is taking that into consideration. There's a lot of money in the marijuana business, marijuana world, people have been looking for years how to make money off the city of Grand Haven, and this is just the latest ploy. And I hope the City Council realizes what they're up against here, and that it's not, I know there's predictions of roses, good times, and a lot of tax money to be coming in, and I think what it's gonna cost is gonna way outweigh any money that it brings back to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Matt Kasturski, five thirty-two Jackson Street, Grand Haven. I've learned that the Old Town District property owners may not buy, sell, or use their properties for the development of commercial medical marijuana facilities. Since last fall, the property owners of four twenty-three, four twenty-seven North Sixth and myself have researched the sale of our combined properties to an approved medical marijuana facility. We are considered Old Town properties. For the following reasons, I request that the city of Grand Haven reconsideres its decision and it affirms the Old Town Property District for the development of medical marijuana facilities. Reason one, Old Town residents are excluded from opportunities that are available to other Grand Haven residents. We cannot participate in potential property sales pertaining to a new industry. Old Town property owners have fewer chances for medical marijuana entrepreneurship. Grand Haven residents, according to the master plan, are afforded entrepreneurship opportunities. Old Town residents and visitors deserve an accessible caregiver west of US one thirty-one. Reason two, Jackson Street is both an arterial and major road, and is considered a large commercial area, according to our master plan. It is not residential. The center lane, no parking, mixed traffic, which has increased with the building of apartments and condos to the west of us, beach traffic, the different aggregates and ash tandem trucks that are hauling those materials up and down the streets all day long, and the Wendy's and taking down the house on Jackson Street next to Wendy's, they've all added different traffic dimensions to my address and to that southwest corner of Jackson and Sixth. During my nine years in Grand Haven, the numbers of cars and commercial trucks on Jackson Street has increased exponentially, and this counters residential living. The southwest corner of Jackson and North Sixth is inconsistent with residential living. Reason three, southwest corner of Jackson and Sixth is ideal for a medical marijuana facility. Jackson is the gateway to Grand Haven beaches, downtown restaurants, special events, and shopping. Jackson is designated as a key street, according to Grand Haven zoning map. Residential housing laws will be negligible. There's an existing business that's been there since like nineteen hundred, there's one homestead, which is my own home, and there's a small rental, long-term rental involved, that's on a very small lot that is not suitable to build under code in this current time. A convenient aggr, aggress for this facility would be available off of Sixth Street to help with traffic, and our sale would be consistent with the Grand Haven zoning plan. The facility would be for reasonable use. Most other areas of Old Town do not meet state guidelines for medical marijuana facilities, and there are no anticipated detriments to the community. This is a chance for us to continue with Grand Haven's master plan, your plan, our plan, and to help out Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Neal, I'm at sixteen forty-four Franklin Avenue. I've been very much part of many of these conversations up until this point, and I just kind of want to share my thoughts. As some of you may know, I'm a holistic healthcare practitioner, and I have owned a business here for about five years, a little over actually. My interest, two and a half years ago, was to branch this practice into a community like ours. I've been here in Grand Haven, and I had sought a property for, for multiple years in trying to execute these types of ordinances. Unfortunately, your neighboring communities had no interest in these ordinances, and so that way, I'm very excited that we are doing this. I have been involved in listening to many of these conversations thus far, and for the most part, I'm really happy with what we have today in front of us. I, I do think there are some buffers that have been implemented that I don't know that I think is necessary, given these circumstances. We are talking about a medical law, and these medical laws need to reflect just that. I pose no risk to anyone based on my medical use. I've been a medical consumer myself for two years, I'm, I'm an epileptic. I actually suffer from seizures on a daily basis, and this is my medicine. I feel like I should have every right to be, accessibility to anybody else in their medicine on any occasion. And so creating buffers from one establishment to another, I am so happy that you guys got rid of that, I appreciate that thought behind that. Otherwise, we had some buffers from the church buffer. Again, I pose no risk to any individual, including those that choose to, you know, partake in those types of things. I work with a lot of individuals that come from substance abuse, and I'm here to tell you that cannabis is a relevant exit drug to these medications that we are being put on today, including pharmaceuticals that we can get at the seven to ten pharmacies located in this community. I would love for you to consider the fact that we have licenses, and why I understand they're not regulated on a local level from, you know, bars, you know, spirits or whatever for sales of, please consider that, you know, if you are not considering buffers from these types of establishments from any of these, they should not be considered for a medical marijuana establishment. Perhaps when we do, maybe in a couple of years, consider these recreational laws, if adult use is a consideration for Grand Haven, these are where we would maybe consider a safety net, if you will. One more thing, sorry about that, let me pull this up. Yeah, additionally, so a parks, can we identify what parks we feel are really necessary for these, these types of buffers if we need them regarding maybe if there's a placed park rather than a sitting one? So I personally look very forward to doing business with the city of Grand Haven regarding these licensing and these new ordinances, and I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
Can I give you guys?
Would you please give those to Linda?
Jamie Cooper, thirteen eighty-six Taylor. I, I'm a very statistical-driven person and solutions-oriented, and so that's why I, I brought some handouts. First of all, I want to talk about the buffers, I think they are completely unnecessary, in the packet that I gave Linda, there are some statistics out of Colorado, these were studies in two thousand seventeen, which was four years after adult use. Colorado had medical well beyond, before that, commercial medical, and then they did adult use two thousand fourteen, January two thousand fourteen is when it was implemented, and then two thousand seventeen was when the studies were done. And in the study, that you will see that Colorado usage among adults for marijuana was actually below the national average. Alcohol is clearly a much larger issue, and in fact, and I, I think this all comes down to social responsibility and the responsibility that we have as parents to have these conversations with our youth and, and how it needs to be addressed, instead of just ignoring that, that conversation altogether. In fact, they are thirty percent less likely to use. And then there's a study in there from the Journal of Adolescent Health, no evidence suggesting a link between accessibility and use, youth usage. I also included some Ottawa County overdose statistics, you'll see that cannabis is not on there, nobody's overdosed in Ottawa County from, from cannabis. And actually, seventy-one percent of the deaths from overdoses were actually from opiates. Typically, we see a twenty-five percent decrease in opiate overdoses when we have cannabis accessibility. That means we would save eight lives in Ottawa County by having this accessibility, that's huge. And so if we have these buffers between churches, parks, daycares, substance abuse programs, then I think that, that it's, it's going to be important that we put these, these buffers on alcohol and pharmacies. It, it doesn't seem fair to me to have these buffers on cannabis, I think it's, in, in my opinion, I think it's discrimination. And, you know, when we have regulated cannabis in our communities, that deters the black market activity. And, and, and there was a, a woman that spoke just a few minutes ago, talking about commercial facility, that, that, that's probably an illegal facility, because we don't have an ordinance that allows for commercial. And I really think that we need to have a lot of faith in our Planning Commission, they have, three of you have sat on the Planning Commission, and, and I saw three of you at pretty much all the Planning Commission's meetings in the last year, and we need to have that faith in our Planning Commission, that they, they didn't think that these additional buffers were necessary, and there's a reason for that, they debated this for about ten months. And so I, I encourage, like, if, if we are really concerned about youth usage, then we need to be proactive as a community, and we need to be putting together programs or asking these licensees to put together programs that is going to address these issues. Again, this is solutions-oriented, and I think that's really important. If you are going to do a church buffer, what, what is a church? What qualifies as a church? So, and no caps, please, no caps, I don't think they're necessary when we have these buffers, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Bryant. I am the property owner of four twenty-three North Sixth Street, and I would just like to thank you for letting me be here tonight. Our property has the characteristics that make a standalone sale very difficult. This long-term rent, we have a long-term rental, it's six hundred and twenty square feet. There is about a foot of property on each side of it, there's six foot in front of it, we have no driveway, we have no parking space, selling our property would be very difficult, we have to have a permit for parking every six months for our renter. We would just like to be given the opportunity to be part of this parcel that would be the corner of Jackson and Sixth, to be used for medical marijuana. We've had, we've had bad luck with our renters in the past, so keeping a rental is a really hard thing as a property owner. We've had it for twenty-four years. It's time for us to move on, it's time for Grand Haven to see something better in its future. Our property would be better used for an exit to a larger facility rather than just a small, tiny, little parcel that is serving Grand Haven not to its best potential. a small, tiny, little parcel that is serving Grand Haven not to its best potential. We are in the proper distance between libraries and schools, and I would just hope that you would consider looking at all of our properties as something that would benefit Grand Haven to its fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm up, Mayor, and I'm about to become the most unpopular guy in the room, but I think it's probably, I'm Jeff Hawke, Director of Public Safety, or Police Chief, and I just want to give you some insights about what I've seen in my 32 years of law enforcement and my opinion on the medical marijuana issue. And I want to start by saying I am in favor of those that need it for a medical condition of any kind, and that if it helps that person, whether it be chemo, epilepsy, severe pain, whatever the issue, if that helps, if that helps, I'm in favor of it. But I also want to tell you what I've seen with the medical marijuana law since its inception in 2008. It's been widely abused throughout my law enforcement career. Anybody with $100 and even not a sworn medical history can get a card, and I even question the relevancy of medical marijuana now with the legality of recreational marijuana. So, I think it's just a soft opening for recreational. And I also did some research, MLive did a lot of research a couple of years ago. It's probably increased a little bit, but Ottawa County was 83rd county out of 83 for number of medical marijuana card holders. It was like 1.2% of the population. So if we extrapolate that out to Grand Haven, say it's even 2%, now, we've got a couple hundred medical marijuana cards in the city. So, that's our demand, and there's a vehicle in the statute now for patients that need it to get it through providers who can grow up to 12 plants per patient, have six patients, plus six plants of their own. So, there's a solid vehicle in the statute now. And as we move forward into thinking about medical retail marijuana, a medical marijuana storefront, I believe that it's much more about profit than it is about patients. There's a vehicle in the statute now for patients that need it to get it. But it's also widely abused, and I even question the relevance now with retail. So, I don't think anything good for the community is going to come of this if it's implemented. Obviously, we'll work diligently with staff, other city staff, to implement whatever your decision is in a cooperative manner, but I wanted you to know my opinion and what I've seen in my years of service regarding the marijuana and what I think about the medical marijuana retail storefront now. So I think it's just a question of, you know, what do you want for the community in going forward? Once it's here, it's not going to go away, and I do believe it will be a soft opening for retail. So, if we look forward, you know, maybe we just consider retail now because at some point, do you want medical and retail? Because that's kind of what's going to go forward. That's going to be the push into the future. So, I just wanted to put those thoughts in your mind so you had something to think about based on my years of experience and what I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Borsma, 1208 Columbus Avenue, Grand Haven. Thank you so much, everybody, for like the big turnout here and council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for hearing everybody's opinions and taking into account what everybody has to say. I am actually a very conservative person. I am very involved in my church here. I would consider myself, while I am a born-again Christian, I help lead praise and worship at my church. I am involved in the children's ministries. I have a teenage son, two adult children, and three grandchildren ages three and under. I also have a new puppy named Luna. I am very much in favor of protecting our children, and I'm very much in favor of protecting our most vulnerable in our society. With that said, the medical marijuana debate, whether there should be buffers between the churches, these facilities don't look like the old-time quote-unquote head shops where there's bongs in the windows. These are very much medical facilities, and I'd like for you to think about if you had a prescription or a medical, something that you needed to get for your health, being able to get that and to access, being accessible. On top of that, having tested product. If we stick with the caregiver model and the things that are going on now, we have instances like the poor lady who's got the marijuana and the odor and everything, and the people coming in and out and knocking on her door and disturbing her peace at her home instead of being able to go and get this at a facility here in town. Testing is so important, and the current model doesn't, you know, a caregiver does not allow for that. So, there are also in action, there is, the state has set up different policies as far as advertising. We can't advertise to our children, and we shouldn't, the same as we shouldn't advertise alcohol and cigarettes to our children. We can walk into Meyer tonight after this meeting with our kids and buy any kind of liquor and buy our cigarettes, and the kids are tracking along with us. We go into a provisioning center. You have to be 21 years old to even enter that facility, and you have to have a medical marijuana card. Has this been abused? Heck, yeah. But there are a lot of people who abuse the prescriptions that they have, that they've been given by their doctors. They abuse alcohol and they abuse cigarettes, and I'm not saying, oh, because this is abused here, we should allow for abuse there. What I'm saying is, is we shouldn't punish the people who really need this because of the few who really take advantage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? When we set out to do these public hearings, we were, oh, there's one. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jen Greenlee. I live at 16731 Ashley. As you all know, it is still federally illegal, and you can't stop federal prosecution if that were to take place. We do know that medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are basically piggybacking on each other. I've been in the medical field for over 25 years. There is not enough scientific evidence from the research that's out there. Research trials have been skewed and flawed. There's still ongoing research. How many have ever been to one of those body world exhibits where you see the plasticized bodies? In my medical field, I had to take actual anatomy classes where we had the cadavers, but being at one of these body worlds, you see the damage from alcohol and drugs and smoking. What are we going to see when it comes to cannabis and marijuana years down the road? Are we going to be ready for that? Now, I do understand there are benefits of CBD, and we do know that the THC part is the part where people get high, but even still, the CBD, there isn't standardization. There isn't enough uniformity in it, and there's different potencies, different grades, different levels of how it's made. Who's going to keep track of that if that's not been standardized and the federal government hasn't even approved it? So, it can be up to different communities, different people that make it. There's going to be a lot of fake stuff out there, and they'll be real, and it does have its place for those that really need it, but it will be too easy to be a soft sell for those that don't. I want to challenge you in your research as you continue to be open to what still needs to come forth in the future in terms of research. If you want to jump the gun and then wait 20, 30 years and then find out, oh, look at these bodies, look at these kids, look at their brains, look at the motivation, look at the cognitive impairment. I've worked with a lot of kinds of patients, and it's really sad to see some that are results of decisions that we have made that have consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Oh, slower than it was yesterday. My name is Rich Dawkins, 1040 Tater, Grand Haven, and I'm not sure how many of you guys on the board or how many people in the audience has ever seen the results of a drug neighborhood and where drugs are sold and on a normal basis. You know, my background is I'm from Chicago, and I run a gang ministry in Chicago for years. I worked with CPD and the gang units in Chicago and other agencies about drugs, and I've seen the results of what drugs can do. Marijuana sold on the streets, sold in the neighborhoods, and everything like that. And in all the years I was in Chicago on the street, and all the drug guys I've seen on the street, sitting on the curbs, homeless, talking to them, none of them ever said they wanted to get up one morning, throw their lives away on drugs. Nobody. It all started with marijuana, and you're told on a regular basis that marijuana is not a gateway drug. I'm telling you, after years of experience on the street, in gang neighborhoods, everybody I spoke to, marijuana is a gateway drug. We're asking and begging, I think Father over here said something about having a 1,500-foot, the churches, the daycare centers, and all these things, expand it out. You guys are the elected officials to do what's best for Grand Haven City. What's the problem with going to Muskegon to buy their marijuana if they want to buy it and not have it in town? You know, it's, there's unintended cost that's going to happen if you legalize and you put marijuana as a recreational drug and let it sell on the streets in Grand Haven. You know, the chief just said that there's going to be cost. We just had Derek talk about this, what, 3.3 million of unexpected costs because of the high water. Next year, when we go into this, and this gets approved and it gets put on, what are going to be the unintended cost? What about law enforcement? What about regulation? What about the other issues that are going to come up? You need to think through, think through what these issues are before we pass this law and authorize the recreational use of marijuana. It's not a good thing. Eight years of experience on the street says so.
Thank you.
Cigarette Home, 16390 Springvale Road, our court. I don't know really where to begin here. I've been asked to come up here and talk. There's a lot of misinformation going on. We've talked about the patient caregiver program. We've talked about MMFLA and then MRMTA. 2008, they put a program in which is called the Patient Caregiver. You just heard a lady speak about it earlier. It's a broken model. It does not have distribution. There's no way to sell it. There's only supposed to be five patients. She should only have, they should have five people come to the door. They're supposed to know them on a personal level. They're licensed, they're hung. That marijuana is only supposed to go to them. These patient caregivers are harvesting 60 pounds every 90 days. There is no way that five people can do that. So this stuff is hitting the street sideways every way it shouldn't hit the street. So by moving to the MMFLA, which you guys are doing, that is what the state has put together to fix their problem. They're not going to come out and tell you they have a problem. You already have the problem in the community. This is the state's way of fixing it. So, I want to say thank you. I've been to a lot of your meetings. You've worked hard. I've listened to you. You're in a tough position. It's going to be a tough decision. I've sat in a lot of these municipalities. It's tough for all of you. People haven't been explained about the metric system and how all this stuff in these provisioning centers, you know, she talked about it earlier, they have to give their license, and before you walk through a door, either way, there's a video camera on you. You cannot get through. We're spending $40,000 in a provisioning center just for cameras. They have what's called an RFID tag as the product comes in and out. It's monitored. The state can log into your system at any given time. The monitoring that they have is beyond because they know they screwed up with the 2008 ruling. So, good luck. It's going to be a tough decision. I mean, a tough one for you guys, but you've already got the problem here. You've got to fix it now.
Thank you. Anyone else? When we set up the public hearing, we had hoped to hear from planning commissioners, but that was a volunteer thing if they wanted to show up and talk about their process, and if not, that's okay too, but here's an opportunity for that. If no one else, if no one else would like to address this public hearing, I'll close the public hearing. This is the public hearing intended to talk about, to gather public input on the zoning piece. As soon as we're done with discussing this, we'll open another public hearing to talk about the regulatory piece, which is going to sound a lot like the same thing, but that's the way our agenda was set. So, one last chance. I understand, and I don't know if you want to quickly give us an overview or gross numbers or what, but I know we have a fair amount of correspondence, quite a bit of emails and such, and I don't expect you to read them all out loud because we've all gotten them. If you could quickly comment on maybe aggregate numbers.
You want to just know people for or against?
Well, just how many we've had, whether, like I said, I don't expect you to read them all.
And I believe the city council has copied on the ones that we received today, so you should have those electronically, and Linda passed a couple other late arrivals out this evening, so.
Right. I believe we've received all the correspondence.
Yes.
Eleven.
So 11 emails received today and yesterday.
All right. So all those are also being read and considered. Am I done?
You can keep going.
That was my three minutes? I don't want to talk too much. All right, so, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, as our agenda is set up, we, our next item would be introductory resolution to amend the zoning ordinance as listed up here. So, council can, we can have a motion of second and discuss the matter. If we don't get a motion of second, it would die for lack of a motion of second. If we have a motion second, discuss the matter, we could postpone, or we could approve or deny an introductory resolution. So, I guess I would wait to hear if we have any motion.
I'll make the motion to a... Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Cummins, second by Dora. All right, so, I would invite council members then to comment, give your thoughts on the zoning, the zoning ordinance amendment. We talked a lot about buffers. We talked a lot about some of the special uses, and we haven't talked much yet about the regulatory piece. Who'd like to begin?
I'll start out. Personally, a lot of information has been shared in both directions by a lot of parties, some of it overwhelming, some of it not so much, things we already knew. I know personally, myself, I don't believe I'm in a position to move forward with this at this point in time. I think it needs quite a bit more discussion amongst ourselves, more public input possibly, depending upon what comes of that. So, I'm of the opinion that we need to step back a little bit and weigh the information that's being provided to us and research through it and see what consensus we come to. and weigh the information that's being provided to us and research through it and, and see what consensus we come to.
Okay, well, that sounds fair. The reason you have public hearings is so you can actually listen.
I just like to, I just like to say that I agree with that. I think we need to step back a little bit and digest some of this stuff that we heard and look at our buffer zones and, and take a harder look at them and see how we want to proceed with this. So I also would like to postpone the vote on this tonight.
Okay, well, we can have a motion to postpone. I want to give everybody a chance to speak.
Okay, all right.
You just want, we're just talking about the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, this zoning, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go through this whole thing again in a few minutes.
Yeah, the regulatory, I have, you know, separate comments. In general, I really appreciate all the, the public engagement and comments, both in person via letter and email. I think this is really what this process is about. Folks can come and attend and see the discussions and want to participate in that discussion and give their feedback. I'm really glad to see that. You know, I have no doubt that I think that we all ultimately want, you know, a medical marijuana ordinance that's, that's best for our community and have good intentions with this. You know, the buffering seems to be the big piece here. I mean, the, the planning commission spent many, many months on this, many hours on this. Staff spent a considerable amount of time on it during that process. And I mentioned some of these comments at the last meeting, you know, but, you know, that in principle, I, I remain against buffers. I support our planning commission's recommendation for only schools to comply with the state law on this. You know, I guess related to that point, you know, like I said, individuals drive by, walk by pharmacies and other places that sell products that they may not view as desirable all the time. And this would not change even if you put some buffering in place. And, and I agree with the mayor's comments at the last meeting that we had in the work session that we really have to be careful to not allow one property owner's type of use and rights and, you know, to infringe on another and how they use their private property. I think we have to be very, very careful in how we approach that. One, looking at the maps that we've had up with, with churches, I think, I think Jennifer's back there. Our definition of our zoning ordinance for a church is basically a place of, you know, public assembly. It's not really defined well. I, we need, I think, some work on that. I, I think it should say religious institutions. I think churches is a, probably not the, the proper term here. There may be others, religious institutions that, that may have concerns if we're, if we're gonna go with buffers. We need to more clearly define that. I do have some concern. There was some, as the maps were created, there was a couple religious institutions that had some property included in the buffering that, that were adjacent to their primary building parcels. But they weren't, didn't in fact have actual churches on them. And so I'm just kind of wondering what some of the thought process was on that and including those in the, in the maps.
Could I just quickly, we do need to do some work. If city council seems inclined to impose buffers, we need to do a little more deliberate discussion and, and define exactly what we mean by that. The Grand Rapids ordinance provides that religious institutions is fairly well-defined, whereas in our ordinance currently, it's, the mayor was pointing out to me today, it's just defined as a, a public assembly space. So we really need to appreciate what it was you were trying to buffer around. And if they're actually places of worship, we need to significantly amend the definitions portion. Not significantly, it'd just be add a definition for religious institutions if that's what you were meaning to buffer around. So I understand what you mean, that some churches own properties that they may not use as their worship space. Were we intending to buffer around those? And I'm thinking maybe not. So we just need to understand a little more about the majority direction so that we can nail down that definition a little better for you.
Okay, well, on that point then, you know, I, I have some concerns with including, would have concerns with including property that's not used maybe for that primary purpose. I mean, you know, and are we gonna expand that to allow, if, you know, it's not an adjacent property or somebody buys, you know, a religion institution buys a piece of property that's three blocks away and it, you know, it's for residential purpose, but it abuts next to an area that maybe does allow, potentially allow medical marijuana facilities, you know, do we, how far do we take that? So that's a concern of mine. You know, should simple ownership of a piece of property essentially by a religious institution eliminate the right of another to have a particular use available to them? I am concerned about going down, down that road. And, you know, reality is that there may be some religious institutions that don't have a concern with medical marijuana. And we're kind of lumping out this big group together and saying, well, we just assume these folks and, and they're, all their members would, would be against this type of a use in our community. And I just, I have some concerns with that. I did mention at the last meeting, you know, that in principle, like I said, I really have a concern with buffering, putting these buffers into place. But the reality is that I think it does us all well if we are open to compromise and willing to kind of meet in the middle where we can agree on some things. So I am open to, I still remain open to compromise on this with my fellow council members. I was the one that proposed three hundred feet and, which is one football field, you know, typically a standard maybe city block, as, as something maybe more reasonable. We've, we've seen some maps related to that, three hundred feet and five hundred feet. So I'm open to compromise at the three hundred foot level. I do have a, I do want to flesh out more, like, why do we have parks included in this? You know, there's already laws in place for, you know, not allowing public use. A lot of our parks are actually city-owned property, except for the state park. You know, if the concern is, is maybe children or those sorts of things, maybe we look at parks with, you know, playgrounds or something like that being what, what we buffer instead of all parks. And it's not sure kind of what the, my fellow council members' concern is with that piece. Maybe we can have some further discussion on, on the parks piece of it and whether or not that, that's really needed. So that's all I have on at least the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I was one of the very first ones that, you know, asked us to be brought on there. It was along with Mr. Bruegger and I both because we were approached by the citizens of town here that were actually using medical marijuana and hadn't, at that time, had to go to Kalamazoo to pick it up. There was no facilities around here, nothing open for it, and it was a long distance. And a lot of them were, some of them were our senior citizens that had to make that truck all the way down there. So that's when we decided that we'd like to open this up and take a look at it. And that's, the reasoning behind it was for that. But now the other facilities have opened up closer. It's totally a different perspective than what we had now because the process takes so long, is what it is. I'm, I like to see the five hundred foot for churches, parks and all, all the rest of it go along with it. That's my personal thing is I like to narrow it down. I don't want a lot of, lot of them around. I just, but I do know that our citizens need, need this. There are, I've seen it happen. I had a good example, one of my delivery guys or one of my salesmen, his kid was on medical marijuana at the last six months of his life and it made it so much easier for him. And it does, he's seen the difference. I mean, he was paraplegic all his life and he's finally got a chance to start standing up and walking. So I do know the need in the process of having medical marijuana. But I really think around parks, substance abuse, childcare facilities and anything else, I still think five hundred feet would be an acceptable place for me to go. I don't think three hundred feet is enough. I like to see the zones. And in far as zoning that, I don't think it needs to be in a business area. There's not, doesn't need to be in our downtown area. Beach Street, there's not, first of all, there's not enough parking downtown. We have, there's only a small little area you can put it in there, but there's no parking down there. We're having a problem with parking as it is already. Beach Tree is another example. If you go down Beach Street, there's no parking. It's, I was just at a fundraiser for a friend of mine who has cancer and that, and it was just trying to find a parking spot down there by Third Coast, a recording studio Saturday night. It was very difficult. It's just, it will be, it will be heavily used. It's, you're gonna see traffic. I just think maybe transitional industrial or just industrial areas start out with and just not a whole lot.
Okay.
Joni spoke to the word about caregivers and that and how broken it really is. I can attest to that a hundred percent. Right next door to my business there was a caregiver. He was there for many years. And my poor sister-in-law would have to sit there and listen, or not listen, but listen to her customers coming and say, what's that smell? And she goes, oh, we got a family of skunks over here. Well, you're right. It's a broken system and this is a better system we're going to. So those, as far as the zoning part, that's where I'm at right now. I'd like to see the five hundred foot and all those facilities.
All right, well, my turn. Appreciate all the work the planning commission did over the past several months. I appreciate all of you showing up today to tell us your thoughts and share those thoughts with us. And I wish, I wish you would have all gotten up and spoken, but we heard from those who really had something to say. And so we, we do listen. I think that the, going back to the, the broken system that's been in place, something when you get initiated law, when you put something on the ballot, people pass it, say, this is now your law. Usually they're not well thought out and they don't work real well. And that's kind of what we have with the two thousand eight law. But it passed by a large margin and that was the will of the people. And it was a system that was thought out by somebody who put it on the ballot, basically. So the legislature came back and put in the, the MMFLA system, which is what we're dealing with now and trying to put that into our, both our zoning ordinance and our regulatory ordinance. I think that this is a positive thing to do. I do feel that if we have people in our community who have this need, we shouldn't be sending them to neighboring communities to fulfill their need. They're our people. This is our community and they're, they should have their needs fulfilled here just as someone who needs to go to the pharmacy or somebody chooses to have, whether it's a retail need or a medical need or whatever, that's why, that's why you have a whole community. So you can accommodate your residents whilst at the same time having the rules in place which can protect the, the rest of us. I think, and I think the rules in place to protect the rest of us is basically following the rules. The, the state licensing, the making sure that we know how special land uses should work. And I would like to say respect for one another, but I guess if you had that, you wouldn't need laws in the first place. So we still have to have rules. So I, I think that what the planning commission did, the way they wrote it, the special land uses, the districts they looked at, all that stuff was perfectly logical and I support it. And I'm also extremely skeptical about the buffers that have been proposed. When I look at the buffers and one of the comments I've heard repeatedly in all the correspondence and a couple of times this evening is that we are protecting vulnerable populations with buffers. When you talk about parks and you talk about churches or religious institutions, the church-going population is basically us. It's the general population. So how does that make us more vulnerable than anyone else? I'm not quite seeing the logic there as to why the buffer is important. I'm also not clear what the buffer is supposed to accomplish. If you have, if you move the operation several blocks away, it's not that big of a town. People will still go by it. People still see it. If you're worried about youth knowing where it is, they'll know. I mean, when we were kids, we knew where, we knew where the cigarettes were and we knew where the beer stores were and all that. I mean, it's not like you're gonna hide this stuff. It's going to be there and people will understand. So having it pushed into some margins of the city, I don't think is an effective way to protect any vulnerable population. So I'm just very skeptical that that's, that that's a good approach. One of the things that, one of the pieces of correspondence we had that I received today was from Margaret Ardell, who has a catering business. She talked about how before she moved to town, she was out in, I believe, in Isle of Township. And she had a place which had one of the medical marijuana, one of the original, they call them provision center dispensaries, under the caregiver law, for it's like twenty fifteen. So it's before the new laws were in effect. She said that they were, what bad neighbors they were and how people would come there and hang out and that she got broken into and all kinds of problems. And yes, we have new, new rules and new laws and all that. But one of the things that we would have here, especially if we have it in the districts proposed by the planning commission, is that we got more visibility. It wouldn't be out in some marginal place. Wouldn't be in a place where nobody sees it, nobody's paying attention and people can misbehave with impunity. If you put it in the city where it benefits our people and put it on streets and on, and districts where it would be with other commercial entities and it would be with other, such as pharmacies or other similar type businesses or similar intended businesses, I think the visibility would help keep them a clean act. And I think that if you talk to anybody in public safety or anybody who in any kind of enforcement, that having things in the open, highly visible and not pushed off into the quiet dark margins or corners of a community is a safer way to go. Plus, it's easier for people to deal with. And I think that also provides some opportunities for some of the property owners we've heard from. So when you start buffering and you get carried away with buffering, I think that you do marginalize a business. You preserve the stigma that has been with these businesses for the past eighty, ninety years since they were criminalized. And really, I think the criminalization of marijuana primarily did two things. It created a thriving black market and it created a lot of minor offenders who became actual criminals. So I don't think criminalization was good, but it created a stigma and we can't seem to get past that. So as far as the, the plan to put buffering and to talk about vulnerable populations and how we're going to protect everybody by pushing these uses somewhere else into somebody else's backyard, I don't think it's effective and I don't think it's fair. And I think we need to understand that what we're talking about are basically things with a pharmacy type of a function. So that's where I'm at with buffers. Is there room for compromise? Well, absolutely. I think it's really important that we get a law in place which allows these institutions or these businesses to exist. And so if we need to, as Mike Dora has said a number of times, take baby steps, that is something we can do. But I think we need to, we need to keep the positives in, in mind as to what we're trying to accomplish, who it's actually for, how it's going to work. So that's, that's kind of my feeling on the zoning piece. Mostly, this has been a conversation about buffers, also about districts. I don't have a problem with the districts that were proposed by the planning commission. I think there was a lot of good discussion and what they finally sent to us, they voted unanimously to send to us. You know, all made good sense in terms of land use regulation. Something that was mentioned earlier, and I'll mention it again, is that if we're going to create buffers around specific types of uses, we better make very clear as to what we're talking about. So if we're talking about religious institutions, we should say, what do we, what we mean by that? Because in our zoning ordinance, it's a place of public assembly. When we wrote the zoning ordinance and created definitions, we said that, what's the land use impact of a particular use? Well, it's because you have a lot of people coming to one place with a lot of vehicles on specific times and dates. And so that's really the land use impact. So that's what you regulate in zoning. So if you want to regulate it for some other reasons, such as defining what you mean by a religion or what you mean by a religious institution, whether it's a large church or a small church or somebody's holding services in their, in their house, or however you want to define it, we better be pretty clear what we mean by that. And I think we, at the same time, we should be clear why, why we think the effect of this protection that we're trying to put in place is going to accomplish. If we want to talk about daycares, well, there's three different kinds of daycares defined in the zoning ordinance. There's commercial daycares, there's large home daycares, and small home daycares. Do we mean all those or do we just mean the commercial ones? So there again, we're not ready with our language as to what we're trying to regulate. So where this actually ends up, I think that we do have some work to do. I agree with, I think everyone has said that we're not ready to move forward on this piece, although there's a lot of legwork that's been done. And so I think that, I think that they, we need to clean this up somewhat. But by and large, I was happy with the planning commission recommendation. So that's all, that's all the comment I can have at this point in time. And I believe that, I believe there was a sentiment to postpone this case until our next meeting to take it up again. Somebody would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make it.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Scott and a second by Cummins to postpone further action on this introductory resolution for the zoning ordinance. Any questions on the motion? Patrick, Pat has one.
I, I do, just a little bit of instruction. I, I believe I'm hearing there may be an interest in implementing these buffers. So we will take the time. Right now, the ordinance that's before you does not include any buffers except the ones that are required by the state under the act. We will develop alternate language that could be used in the event you decide you want to see buffers. You know, so far, that's not been done and it's not included in what's in front of you tonight and what's the, the topic of the motion that I think remains on the floor until you vote on the one you just made.
Yeah, I think the, it can be amended, but right now we're.
It could be amended after the introduction, sure.
Right now, we're not ready to do anything with it.
So I'll just work with the community development manager, Jennifer Holland, and see about some alternate language. We've gotten some good. see about some alternate language. We've gotten some good advice over the last few days with the public, and some people that have some pretty good grasp on how these ordinances work, about how we ought to be defining these things. And I think we do need to be very intentional about what we mean by a religious institution. And we've got lots of other examples, so I'll put some of that language together, refine the maps a little bit. You've seen the maps, you've gotten copies of the maps, those are publicly available. We'll, if we go with the definition that Grand Rapids uses, it specifically says, "A building which is the place of worship," something along those lines, not any property owned by a religious entity or something. So, you know, we can refine these maps to show that, to show the distance from the property lines of the building, where the building actually sits, where people worship. And otherwise, the other definitions are a little more clear, that, you know, are already established definitions in other laws. So, we'll get that put together and have it in front of you in time for your February meeting.
All right, fair enough. Do we need to vote on postponement?
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. All right, per our agenda, we will have another public hearing now on the regulatory piece for the medical marijuana. So I will now open the public hearing. If anyone has further comments that they haven't made, or comments specifically about the regulatory ordinance, please come forward.
Jamie Cooper, 1386 Taylor, and I promise I won't talk as fast this time, because I have little notes, like my notes last time were this, this time it's this. So, in the regulatory part of the ordinance, I kind of, I would like to see something in regards to the timeline of everything, you know, what, what does the timeline, timeline look like when the acceptance of applications? And the timeline of the lottery drawing, and I say that because it's just accountability, you know, holding you guys accountable, and the city staff accountable, just like we are held accountable as citizens and, and business owners. Another thing, so, there was, before, there was a thirty-month requirement that, to, you know, you have to have two of three things. One would be a pre-qualification, second would be the, it had thirty, thirty months, you couldn't flip the property and sell it. And then the residency requirement, I would like to see that, that thirty-month, or it doesn't have to be thirty-month, but I'd like to see something, because I just, I've, I've been involved in the industry for four years now, and, and what happens is people come in, snatch up the property, and they flip it, and sell it for for way, 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 way more money. And, and, you know, I love our community, I love what we have here, and I just, I would like to see that kind of added back in, you know, it doesn't have to be thirty, but maybe like be in the middle with eighteen months. I kind of want to address the parking concerns. The great thing about the, the great thing about our state is the fact that, that they have listened to, to the business owners, and that those in the industry that know a lot about it. I've been involved with it, and, and they have the public hearings where we get to go in there and kind of give our feedback, and they have listened. And one of the first things that, that a lot of people were saying is like, delivery, delivery, we, we should have delivery as part of the MMFLA. And they put that in there. So, so this means that the provisioning centers, you know, can, can deliver, like patients can put in their order online, they can either go pick it up, or the provisioning center has staff and transportation to take it to, to, to the patient's house. I think this is huge when we have really sick people. A lot of people are using this to help with their cancer. My dad, three years ago, died of pancreatic cancer, and he was using it illegally in Texas. And, 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 and just helping these patients out in that manner, I think goes a really long way. And that helps address the parking concerns in, in the Beechtree area, for instance, you know. When we, when we have that option, and, and these provisioning centers are really encouraging their patients to use the delivery as an option, that does aid in those parking issues that we could see regardless. And, and another thing I want to keep in mind, we need to keep in mind, is the fact that people spend very little time in the provisioning centers. They go in there and they kind of know what they want, they grab and go. I, I don't think it's much different than, than maybe Meyer. And then, we have four thousand patients and caregivers in Ottawa County, and, and, and those, those people are growing. And, and a lot more people will go to provisioning centers, so I think a cap of two provisioning centers is a little extreme. I think three to five would be more idealistic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Hendrick, 1514 Pnoya. That's my main concern regarding the regulatory ordinance, or one of them, I did send you an email earlier, just addressing the number of ancillary services. When I say ancillary, what I would mean is the secure transport and the safety compliance. The whole point of a safety compliance facility is an, outside of the grow provisioning and processing and selling operations, to be able to bring this product there, test it, make sure that it's safe, and put it back in the hands of these facilities so that it can be sold. So, the idea of having just one, I don't, it's so unnecessary, because if we really care about safe products getting to, to medical patients within the city and around the area that will come here, there's no need to limit the number of those. And again, if you had a chance to look at the maps that are published by Lara, there is so few transport, or, secure, I'm sorry, safety compliance facilities, and I think the closest one here is Battle Creek. There's one in Lansing, and there's others that are in process of opening, but that's a needed service within the industry. And if we really care about growing the marijuana industry, the medical marijuana industry effectively, there's no need to limit the number of those within the city. Additionally, I feel the same way about provisioning. Two is, I also sent you a map containing all of the liquor licenses within the city of Grand Haven, which is eighty. I can kind of quickly break that down. There's SDMs, STDs, and Class C. Class C is somewhere you walk in, you buy a drink, you drink it there. STDs are, I think, just liquor sales, and SDMs are beer and wine. Regardless, there's forty-one stores where you can walk in, buy alcohol at the shelf, and walk out in the city of Grand Haven. So please, when you're talking about the negative impact of marijuana, especially at a medical capacity, consider what it looks like and how it impacts people around us that you can walk in and buy alcohol and walk out. Also, I did send you something regarding the number of pharmacies, which was incorrect. I think there are seven pharmacies within the city of Grand, or Grand Haven. I did count Meyer, even though it's in Grand Haven Township. But again, when we're thinking about this in comparison to similar land uses, please consider what we already have here. Lastly, and then I'll stop my ADD ranting. I have been asking for good community engagement options, and I was hoping that the regulatory ordinance was a spot that we would find some of those. I know that we don't necessarily have to grade someone on the quality of what they put forth, but there's no reason that we can't add within the regulatory ordinance language that ask an applicant for their patient education plan, for their community engagement, for a good neighbor plan, similar to Grand Rapids. I'm sitting here with industry professionals that have had really good relationships with, with individuals in community organizations in Grand Rapids, and have made amazing plans and worked with communities to develop good facilities, that I'm looking forward to seeing how they progress as they open. Sales to minors, loitering, crime prevention, littering, those are things that we can ask of people. And I think it's completely appropriate that they provide those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And again, the correspondence we received has been kind of a mixed bag. It's been about both the zoning piece and the regulatory piece, mostly about the zoning piece. And the, just, just very briefly summarize, the regulatory piece is about how we take, accept, process applications, and issue permits. So a lot of that is more of the nuts and bolts of actually issuing permits so places can open. And then there's some about performance, and non-performance, and penalties and such. So that's kind of what that's about. It's, it was included in our packet, which is available online for anyone to read. So if you haven't read it and want to, not the most exciting read, but it's there, and it's pretty impactful, because whatever we adopt, assuming that we adopt something, will certainly have consequences. So, on that note, one last call. Anyone interested in addressing counsel on this issue?
Rebecca Neal, 1644 Franklin. I promise I'm not going to be long. I'm just going to piggyback basically on what was just spoken to regarding parking. Similarly to what some people were stating, is that these are a lot of times in-and-out operations regarding, for the most part, we know what we're picking up. I know exactly what my medicine is. It takes me all fifteen minutes, maybe, and that's because I may be waiting in a line. And so just recognizing that these are, in most case scenarios, an in-and-out practice. I think it's important that we don't default to, to restrictive laws, just because we fear it. You have to remember that these have been laws that have been in prohibition, prohibition for many, 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 many years. I think it needs to be of consideration to maybe look at these regulatory laws as a progressive means of moving forward. So, like I said, the parking, like Jamie had mentioned, we have over four thousand patients. That is a substantial amount of individuals that are looking for medicine. If we cap this at two provisioning centers, with the, without consideration of delivery of the, or anything of that needs, you have an influx of, you know, community individuals that are needing their medicine. Yeah, I just think that, as, as mentioned before, also the education component. My goal as a provisioning center owner is to educate my, my, my constituents, my, my customer base. We are implementing laws, and we never thought once about educating our, our consumers. And that's where we are in these laws. So, as mentioned before, we are now backtracking on some, some necessary things that need to happen, and hopefully with those considerations of these applications, that education is a huge component to this. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. I am Kathleen Graham. I'm not a resident. I am the regional manager of a hospice organization, and I oversee the nurses that care for your dying residents. And I do want to follow and piggyback on the education requirements. Currently, in our temporary rules, number fifty-six requires these establishments to let them know what training and education requirements there are, and I would like for you to include that in yours. You have a right to ask these businesses, what is their education plan? We have a social responsibility to take care of, of the residents and the patients, and even the staff that work here. Is there, what is their education plan to reduce harm and improve outcomes? What is their education plan to recognize drug abuse and drug addiction, and what resources are they going to have to help those particular patients? And in particular, just to make sure that the patient knows what they're taking in a way to reduce harm and, and improve outcomes. Definitely an education plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Next item on our agenda would be consideration of an introductory resolution for Chapter nine-five Business Regulations. My understanding, again, is that council will likely want to postpone action on this. However, if there's a motion, in a second, we could discuss it, if there's things we wish to discuss.
A move? With support?
A motion by Cummins, support by Fritz, for the introductory resolution for Chapter nine point five.
I have to agree with Ms. Cooper on, on adding the thirty months more onto it, because they will have a tendency of flipping them, there's so much, I, you can see that's going to happen. I have to agree with her a hundred percent on that. And, I don't know if, I didn't quite remember, we have odor control? I'm, I'm on this odor control thing right now, I'll be honest with you, because thanks, Joni, for bringing that to my attention. I, I really think we need odor control. And also, I'd like to see neighbors, you know, involvement of some sort, and neighbors, wherever this is going to be, I really think it's really important for us to have a neighbor involvement in it. They should be involved somehow or another. I don't know how we write this up, or about anything. I think it's very important that wherever you put a facility at, that the neighbors are also part of that thing, so they can wrap their arms around it. I don't know how we do that, but I think that's very important for it.
Okay, that it?
For now.
For now, yeah. Fair, fair enough. Anything else?
Yeah, I think we, we got a turn, and talked about the education of, of, of people that use marijuana. I think that's a good thing to put in our ordinance. I think we need somehow to inform the people that use it, the consequences of using it, and, and the benefits and the consequences both. So, I think, I, I'm in favor of doing that. And, again, with Mike, I, I agree with the odor control. I think we need to do some, some kind of a measurement to, to figure out what the odors are to the neighbors that are close to those facilities. So, two concerns that I have, so.
Okay, thanks. Anything?
The consent to search language, I think, is, is much better on this, and much more reasonable, so I'm very much in support of, of where it's at now versus where we had it before at the work session, so. A little shocked to see some limits here for the number of permits. You know, I know we had some discussion at the work session about, you know, limiting numbers, if buffering didn't really limit the numbers. I don't remember us ever really discussing any, you know, specific numbers. And here we have before us, you know, two provisioning centers, and then one of every other license type. You know, if we decide to go this direction with the caps, I think that, you know, if we compare this to, say, pharmacies, you know, we have two Walgreens in the city, DNW is a pharmacy, Dune Wood has a pharmacy, so there's at least four pharmacies right within the city limits. And then right across the street from our border, we have Meyer and Walmart that have, have pharmacies. So that's six in pretty close proximity to, you know, within the city, or very close to our, our city limits. So, you know, I'd be looking to see that, that cap number up. If we're going to go with the cap at all, I, I think that the, if we're going to go with the buffers, I think that seems to limit the, the numbers quite greatly, as it is anyway. So I'm not sure that there really would be a need for caps, but if we're concerned about, you know, starting slower and limiting this in the beginning, you know, I think a higher than two cap seems more realistic for the provisioning centers. And then the other types of license types, I don't see a concern with placing caps on those. You know, I don't see lab testing as a concern, that, that we would be, you know, we want safety of the product, and a lot of the folks in this industry are saying that there's not enough labs out there to test this product and keep up with that type of demand, to get, you know, for, for products to be on shel, on shelves. So, I'm not sure that I have a concern with limiting, or would want to limit the number of lab testing that our, our community could potentially offer. As far as the, the no license transfer, you know, I, I support the comments that were made by Ms. Cooper, that I don't want to see somebody just come in and just skip this license, and then quick turn around and flip it for a profit. So if we have some limit on, on how long they have to hold on to that license for, I think originally, the language from, from Meridian Township was thirty months. If we want to look at a different timeframe, I'm open to that, but I think something should be in there on that. Support of the community members' comments related to the patient education plan seems, seems reasonable to me. To your point, Mike, you know, we had some discussion last time about wanting some, some neighbor engagement, you know, as this process gets started, or before it goes through the Planning Commission, and, and I brought up that Grand Rapids has these good neighbor plans, and they have good, they have requirements to engage their neighbors as they're going, or before they even begin that process, and then submit proof of how they did that. They have to have a copy of the notices that they sent, including the names and addresses, a copy of the times, dates, and locations. You know, what concerns the neighbors had, how they were working to address some of those current concerns. And it doesn't prohibit, you know, that land use from being approved. It's not that if the neighbors still stay against it, that it may not be approved, but at least I don't think there's any negative to encouraging folks to have some discussions with, with nearby folks, if they're, if they're applying for something to have some discussions with nearby folks if they're applying for something to kind of mitigate, you know, some of the concerns that the neighbors may have. Like I said, it covers litter and loitering concerns, landscape maintenance, training on staff, crime prevention. I mean, they have a very good, I think, solid good neighbor plan that seems reasonable for us to include in our regulatory ordinance here as well. I remain, my position remains on the operating hours. I don't think this needs to be in the regulatory ordinance. It should be added to zoning ordinance or just be left up to the planning commission. They already look at business hours of operations as part of their reviews. I still have some concerns with the sign restrictions. Councilmember Dora pointed out to me that the state rules do have some language kind of limiting the types of signs that these businesses can have. I think our language goes a little bit beyond that, but I'm not overly concerned, I guess, in the end on it. The local ownership piece, we had some discussion last time. That number was set at like 75% and that seemed too high. And I see that it's kind of been lowered down to at least 33%. We would like to see 33% ownership and that we would give that applicant preference in the lottery process, you know. Certainly one approach, I don't know, you know, or do we look at just making it outright requirement that you must have some kind of local ownership here to open a business here. And I think we talked, we had some discussion last time that, you know, we think local ownership, that folks may, my concern, I guess, I guess I can speak for myself, that my concern is that these big businesses are going to be, that have the capital to meet the state's requirements, are just going to come in and buy up those properties. They're not familiar with the area and that some of that local ownership in these businesses can help with some of that. So I guess I'll be open to some more discussion and fleshing that out a little bit more. Should it just be, give somebody preference in the lottery or should we actually just outright require that? I think I'd lean towards outright requiring local ownership. We do need to kind of work out some timeline things with the lottery, you know, would this be a first come or other, as far as the timeline, accepting, how long would that be open? I know we had some discussion at the work session about kind of going through some scenarios to make sure we fully flesh that out to address any things that, some things that maybe we didn't think of. It's, I think that needs some work still. And then at some point, I think we're going to have to update our fee schedule, right, for these types of application. I think we could, we can set it at $5,000. I think a lot of other communities have done that. I hope that whenever we get something passed, that it's, at the same time, that's added right in there too. That's not included in this regulatory ordinance. I know we have a separate fee schedule and structure that's set at, I think, a different time during the year, is reviewed at a different time. But I want to make sure that that's not lost in this as well. So that's all at this point.
All right. Mike?
Yeah, where this all ends up, obviously, we need to research it a lot more for the next meeting to be a little more prepared. I do. I support the no, retain the no license transfer for 18 to 30 month period. I think that's fair. I'd like to see the odor stay in. I know there was some question about how that was going to go one way or the other at the last meeting. Buffers, if we do end up moving with buffers of 300 to 500 feet, then probably not too much for limits because that's going to kind of limit where places can be anyway. If we're not going to have buffers, then I can see limiting the number of provisioning centers. The rest of them, I don't really think we need to limit them. There's no sales. They're basically just transporters and, you know, safety facilities, compliance things. I don't think we need to probably number those. People just seem to be mostly concerned about the sales aspect. Safety compliance, I think that should be top of the list. We should take as many of them as what people want to move in here. I mean, really. Education, I think that's number one, right along with community involvement. They should be required to, you know, canvass the neighborhood, have a neighborhood meeting, you know, tell people, you know, this is what we are, this is what we do. Have some participation from folks in the areas where these are going to be so they can feel they're involved. And some type of involvement goes a long ways to people being receptive to having something or not. Some of the areas that we have, there are some parking issues, we know that. Beechtree is one that is currently allowed. There's no parking now when you try to buy an ice cream cone. I can't imagine what it's going to be like, you know, down the road. Not too much else I can add to it. I mean, you know, at the present moment.
All right. Well, let me talk.
I am.
Okay, thanks.
Just talking to Denny a little bit.
All right. Yeah, I went through this, this version of the ordinance and they had a number of things that I think should be changed or adjusted. Let me talk about the odor for just a moment because that is in here. It says, "Indoor operational activities, commercial medical marijuana facilities, including without limitation, distribution, growth, cultivation, sale," and several other words. And then it says, "Facilities' operation design shall minimize any impact adjacent uses, including the control of any odor by maintaining and operating an air filtration system so that no odor is detectable outside the permitted premises. Most facilities and drive-through operations are prohibited." That's in the current draft. My question last time was, what do you mean by no odor is detectable? I think you need to determine what that means. Does that mean that an average person walking by can't smell it? Does that mean that your German shepherd can't tell it's there? Does that mean that if you have really sensitive instrumentation, it can't detect it? I think that needs to be clear as to what level of no odor is detectable that we mean. I think what we mean is we don't want it to be a nuisance, that we don't want people to be bothered by it. I don't think that we necessarily mean that if there's some way to detect it, we've automatically found ourselves a violation, so let's jump on it. I don't want this to be something that's intended to avoid a nuisance and becomes a way to harass someone. So that was my concern about odor. It's in here in those words that I just read. So we didn't remove it. It's there. It's just that I think it needs to be clear.
Yep.
Going back to the top here, talking about the limits on how many. I think that there's probably, I know the planning commission's attitude was that let the market control it. And I think that that's probably not, not by itself, an acceptable answer. I think that you can have a lot of buffers that will put a lot of limits on it. At one time, they talked about separation limits, which I believe is how Grand Rapids is controlling their numbers because they can actually buffer each other out. You can have, you establish one, nothing can be near it, okay. It kind of cascades around the map. And we don't have that. So we have, we could conceivably have a large number of them, but because it'd be a fairly competitive environment, I don't think you'd get a tremendous amount of people coming in for them because we're not going to be that cheap of a place to operate. Our land isn't that cheap. I think that there's places, other communities, where you're more likely to get a large number. If we're going to set limits, I think these limits are way low. I don't know where they came from. I assume that they were just put in there as placeholders. Having one, I won't get any growers in this town, but if we did, having, allowing one, one processor, one safety compliance permit, one secure transporter, those are anti-competitive and monopolistic. I mean, just from a business point of view, why would you just have one? If only one applies, well, then you get one. But if you allow for more than one, and there's, as Mike says, as Mr. Dora says, some of these, like a safety compliance facility, that's a, that's a high-tech industrial lab. That'd be great jobs to have. That'd be a great investment. Having a facility like that, if you could get more than one, if you could, if you could even get one, that'd be a great land for us. I mean, a great thing to have. Some of the others, maybe they're just kind of go along with the rest of the business. But as far as provisioning centers, permits, two, there again, I think that if you're going to set a number, you're basically pulling a number out of the air at this point. You don't have a logical basis for choosing one number over another. Let's at least choose a large enough number so that people have some options and that you can have some competition. And if it ends up being not that many people are interested in doing business here, you won't get that many applications anyway. I'd suggested the piece about the local preference expressed through a two-stage lottery. If you had people who had a component of local ownership, they get first choice. You know, the people don't, probably get pros out of the lottery process. I think that's, that's one way to do it. If you want to insist on some level of local ownership, you'll probably end up with a straw man. You'll probably end up with somebody who's got their name on it because they needed a local guy to be on the ownership. So I don't know if that would really be, I don't know if that would really work or not work. I guess we could, we could require it, but I'd be more inclined to say, well, if you have a local owner, you get preferential treatment on getting a permit. And if you don't, you don't get preferential treatment. But if you're the only guy who applied, maybe you get the permit. So I'd like to see these, if we, if we, if we do feel the need to put caps on these, and I think we'll probably end up with something, then let's have bigger caps. Let's have numbers like four, five, six, something like that, and see where the market takes it. And if we decide buffers are good enough, then we'll go with the buffers and say, see where they end up. I kind of like the idea of no separation limits, which the planning commission took out and we never put back in because I see nothing wrong with having these near each other and pretty much all in one place. So that's my thought on the numbers. There's a thing in here about a permit and renewal permit shall, a permit and renewal permit shall not confer any vested rights or reasonable expectation of subsequent renewal on the applicant or permit holder and shall remain valid for one year immediately following its approval. Basically, you're saying there that you got a permit, you ran your business properly, you did everything we asked of you, but you shouldn't expect to get a renewal, no matter how much you invested in your business. So I think that paragraph probably could come out. I don't really see a value in it, certainly not in that form.
What's the section number on that?
No, that's, I've got to back up a bit here. 9.540, 40G. Just read how that, read up what it says. What it says to me is that you got a permit, no matter how you operate your business, how good you are or anything, you have no reasonable expectation of getting a renewal, which I think is probably not the message we intended to send. Thank you for, thank you for softening the random inspections. I think we can still have a right to have inspections of facilities. If there's really suspicion that something is wrong, you go to the judge and you get a search warrant, just like you would with any suspected criminal activity. So I don't think we need to have random inspections at all times of day and night just because we want to. I think it should always be based on suspicion. There's a piece in here about community development manager is informed of, finds the deficiencies in the application, the application's on five business days to correct it. And then three paragraphs later, we say that if an application is rejected or denied because of missing, incomplete, erroneous, false, misinformation, city manager gets to decide. So I think that you probably ought to say in there that if they've already had their five-day notice or after having their five-day notice, if they haven't fixed it yet. I think there's a little piece there that got disconnected. There's a section on, back up here and get the number. 9542B, oh, C, sorry, D, D2II. There's a whole section in here about applicant submitted Sash Jager proof, and it refers to some lines that were removed. So we need to either remove this reference or put those lines back in because you're referring to 9542A3I1. And it says, and those lines aren't there anymore. So kind of cross-reference back to something that we took out. So there's some housekeeping in here that needs to be fixed. The 33% ownership should say minimum. There's a piece in here, there's two paragraphs. I'll read them both. This has to do, this is issuance of commercial medical marijuana facilities permit, talks about, "The applicant or permit holder has a duty to notify the community development manager in writing of any pending criminal charge and any conviction, any criminal conviction of a felony or other offense involving a crime of moral turpitude by the applicant or permit holder or any owner, principal officer, director, manager, employee, within 10 days." The next paragraph says, "An applicant or permit holder has a duty to notify community development manager in writing of any pending criminal charge or any criminal conviction, whether felony, misdemeanor, petty offense, or any violation of local law, related cultivation, and so on and so forth," a variety of words. Those seem to be saying the same thing, except one of them appeals to moral turpitude and the other just appeals to specific things in our regulations. I think that we should probably focus on what's in our regulations. I'm not sure where you're, where you're going with the other. I assume that was in the original language you got from Meridian Township. So I'd like to clean that up. The entire section on operational requirements, section 9543, is redundant either with the zoning ordinance or with state law. So I think that most of it, if not all of it, could be taken out. In particular, the piece about operating hours, which the zoning ordinance already gives a range. And the sign restrictions, which say no pictures, photographs, drawings. We were told by the Supreme Court three or four years ago that we can't regulate the content of signs, so telling people what they can and cannot say on signs isn't really an option for us. If there's state law that says they can't, okay, but we can't. So I would remove that. Basically, I'd remove this entire section because I think it is redundant with the zoning ordinance and the state regulations. And that's pretty much my comments. And I can summarize these for you afterwards, but that's, I just wanted to read publicly the things in here that I found, that I think we need to clean up. So as Mr. Dora says, and as others have said, we've got some more work to do. Okay, any other comments? Would anybody like to postpone this?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely, but that's not what we need in conjunction with the other one.
Yeah, indefinitely would, it never comes back.
Whichever comes to.
I can bet.
Okay, we have a motion by Fritz, a second by Scott, to postpone until our next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought you said.
No, I actually said indefinitely, but...
I know what you said. The practical matter, let's...
Wouldn't be easier to tackle them one at a time. Do one at the next meeting and do one at the meeting after that.
Questions on the motion? We can always postpone again.
Or you want to see until you get more information back?
I don't need, I don't necessarily have to have it for the next meeting.
My only concern was we're going to be sitting in the next one facing two great big items, just like we are again tonight, of, you know, two larger issues. And we're just going to, you know, a bunch of people are going to show up and we're going to postpone one because we didn't get to it or couldn't have all the information that we needed. I almost think it would be better off if we just took one, one of these and focused on that. And then the next meeting, take the next one and flesh that one out. And it gives us time to maybe, you know, have a meeting where we can have like just an evening or something between meetings where we can work through some of this. I don't quite know what you would call that, but I mean, I'm just trying to, if we split them up, I think we have a better chance of accomplishing them than if we try to do it all at once and you're looking at, you know, another big agenda and we're going to sit here and struggle through them both.
That might be a good idea. If we all sit down and have a work session all together, sit down at a table and open up to the public if they want to be there, but it's a big work session that we can all hash this thing out and see if we can agree, get the language we agree to, you know, that we want. That might be a good idea.
I think that if we're going to postpone, we should postpone either to a date or to an event such as resolving the zoning piece. If you just say indefinitely, then it doesn't necessarily ever come back. That's one of those reverse rules things.
I know. I don't think indefinitely is the right answer, personally.
We postpone.
I mean, we should pick, we should pick a time.
We postpone the zoning until February 3rd, correct?
Till the next meeting, which is February 3rd.
Let's tentatively put this one to the meeting after that, then. If you want to schedule another work session or something, we can do that. But I'd just like to have it come back on our agenda at some point.
Great. I agree because we're doing a lot of changes.
We are.
We're asking for a lot of different changes and different things.
Well, we've taken a lot of, a lot of thoughts from the public, too, we want to incorporate.
Yeah, we can incorporate all that into it, too. You know, that's what I'm saying, is a lot of changes are going to be happening.
Okay. So does that work if we put it to that next meeting after?
Do the following meeting after the next, yeah.
Okay. So that's your motion now?
Sure. I'll make that motion.
All right. Does that make sense?
So we're postponing it to the February 17th council meeting.
Yes. I just want it to come back on the agenda at some point.
I mean, that gives everybody some time to sit down between the two and, you know, if we can have a work session and just, everybody can throw out their, their thoughts and ideas and, you know, even if it's between our regular ones, I'm, I'm open for that. I mean, I think Denny would be. I'm sure, I'm sure everybody would be, but...
All right.
I think it's a good idea to have a special work session that we all get together and we discuss this thing.
For the purposes of the postponement, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes. All right. So, stay tuned, folks. We will take this up again. The zoning piece will take up again at our next meeting. The regulatory piece will come back up on our agenda. Two meetings from now, and in the meantime, it will probably be addressed in some open public work session. But we will do everything in public meetings, so.
Bob?
I didn't get a chance to, I just wanted to comment quickly before this breaks up about a couple of things that came up during the comments.
Yes.
If I may, the, uh, as far as the, the number of permits go, you know, I looked at Meridian Township, so you're correct, and they had a certain number that they set based on, uh, the census numbers that the Liquor Control Commission would run. Um, and obviously, Grand Haven has a lot more liquor permits than that, 'cause we've gotten all kinds of other permits that have found their way into the city over the years. But just based on our, you know, eleven thousand population. And the notes that I took last time said, well, let's start out setting it low, but make it easy to raise it. So, the proposed language in the resolution, just, or I'm sorry, in the ordinance says, city council can adjust those limits anytime.
Yes.
By simple resolution. So, I, I thought the idea was, well, let's start them with a low number, see what we get in. And then, if you wanna raise them, if you get a lot of permits and there's ample room, you didn't have the buffers inside. But I just wanted to explain where, why that number was set so low. I'm okay with, you know, I'm not recommending any particular level. I was just putting something in there to be in there. And it, I made it very clear that it would be easy, just in one meeting, the city council could change those by a simple resolution. It wouldn't have to be an ordinance, no public hearing, you could just do that. The neighborhood involvement idea is a great idea. And when somebody applies for a special use permit, uh, they have to have a public hearing. Everybody within three hundred feet getting, gets notified. They come to a public meeting that is publicly noticed. And the planning commission can require any number of things that we can put into that special use permit language, that, you know, a, an education plan can be required, this can be required, that can be required. If there's some requirement that they have some non-public meeting, I guess, how does that get noticed? Who attends? Who takes minutes? How public is that, really? Is it just the applicant? And what goes on at those meetings? What type of discussions occur about somebody that wants to buy a property in a neighborhood and talk to the neighbors and have, you know, essentially private discussions with them? I, it just doesn't seem like a, a typical public event. But if you have a special use process, which is, that's what the special use permit is about, is to make sure everybody within a certain radius of a particular use, and there's no other uses in the city that you require anything like that. And I heard a lot of discussion tonight, well, why are we treating this differently than a bar or a pharmacy? Well, the same discussion could be had there, you know, why are we requiring them to come in? And who on city staff or who among us in this room are qualified to review an educational plan and say, well, that's sufficient or that's not sufficient? And we're, you know, what type of information? We've heard some very different opinions tonight about this particular drug and what, how we should be regulating it and what it does to you. And there's, there's a lot of different attitude out there. So, to try to come up with a city position on what their education plan should be, it might be a little tricky. You know, I guess we can require it, and they've gotta produce it and provide it to us to review. Um, but I, I just don't know that we've got the expertise to, to look at that educational plan and say, this is a good one or this isn't a good one. I just think the current special use permit does provide opportunity for neighbors to know what's going on, what's being proposed, and what's, what's happening. So, that, that's why I didn't include anything in the regulatory ordinance, because it was just, it was a little, uh, clumsy. Jennifer and I were talking about, well, exactly, how do we set this up? And I know Grand Rapids has it in their ordinance, and I've read that. Um, but, you know, I, I think we already have it with our special use process.
Yeah, but so do they. I mean, it's a state law requirement. So, I think it's worth a discussion with them to see how that, that plays out. I mean, again, you know, you can, we have public hearings and concerns may come up from neighbors, and the planning commission hears those. But then, there's not the dialogue that maybe needs to occur to, to flesh through some of those things. And some of the times, it's a lot of times at public hearings, we've heard many of them at public hearings, sometimes it's misinformation, or sometimes if you just, uh, it's an answer that somebody's seeking and they just had a simple question, and then, there's not that, just that dialogue. And so, I, I really would like to see that explored, that's something that I, I think is very important.
Very important.
And, uh, let's see, yeah, I guess that's all I had on that.
Okay.
By way of explanation, 'cause there were some questions that came up, why was this or why not that? That's why. And, uh, you will have to explore that. I guess I don't exactly understand how Grand Rapids doing it. Oh, the, the one last thing is about Meridian Township, about the local ownership issue, is they put that requirement in there and they found no bona fide businesses with the capacity to actually build one of these existed within the township. So, they didn't get anybody that took advantage of that, and they still haven't issued any of the permits yet. So, I, I do think if we require local ownership, you are probably going to see non-local entities coming in and recruiting local owners to be a part of their business, rather than a whole lot of them. I, I don't know how many in a town of eleven thousand people are gonna come out and say, I wanna open one of these businesses up. It could, you know, inadvertently restrict the, the rollout of these types of centers. You know, if you just say you gotta be local ownership, you know, like, like the mayor said, you end up with somebody that just kinda manufactures a local owner just to meet that criteria. So, I, I thought by giving local owners first shot at it, and we take all the local ones, and it, let's say if you set a, if you don't set any limits, if you can get as many as you want, or if it's four, or five, or six, local people get first crack at those four, or five, or six. And then, if there are more than that that are looking for them from outside, there's a lottery. So, I was trying to set that up, and say, again, it's a little clumsy, it's a little raw at this point. But we got a lot of work to do on that.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we'll move on in our agenda.
Another public hearing. Mass accidents.
Pardon?
Our next.
That's okay.
Our next item on our agenda would be a public hearing. Consideration, okay, a public hearing for the Explore the Grand Region Committee Parks and Recreation Plan in Northwest Ottawa County. Basically, it's our parks and rec plan for the next five years, is it? This is a public hearing, so we may take any public input. Is there, do we have someone who's going to make a presentation?
Uh, I can't see if Derek's out there. Derek's not there.
Yeah, he's there. Derek is right there. You can see the shirt. He's hard to miss. Okay.
Not quite as bright as my other shirts, but.
If you would make a brief presentation, then we'll take comment from the public.
So, the city, uh, along with the other, uh, neighboring municipalities have updated the, um, Parks and Recreation Plan. It's presented tonight, uh, in draft form for you to consider. Um, we have to consider it tonight in this public, uh, hearing and, uh, and vote on it in order to have all of the communities, um, be eligible for this year's grant. It needs to be submitted by, uh, February first. So, on the thirty-first, um, our consultant, Pam Blau, will be submitting it on behalf of all of the communities. Um, there are a couple typos we found. Thank you, Councilman Meridora. We have all five, should have all five listed on there. Um, and a couple other ones that will be taken care of. Part of the, uh, public comments, or part, yeah, public comments from each community, we also listed, uh, in, as the appendix. So, as she compiles those, it'll be submitted to the state. If you have any other questions, it's a kind of a lengthy document. We've had, uh, some good input. Uh, I've been working on it since September, so.
So, it's, uh, one of the things that Pat suggested you might do is have our list of our action plan or our, our parks projects, which is included in here.
Correct. The, the, and we have gotten some comments that need to be added into the plan or a few adjustments that need to be made. And it's meant to be a, kind of a shotgun approach, where we list every project that Parks and Rec could come up with. It's millions of dollars worth of projects, but we can't apply for any of these projects unless it's on that list. So, we encourage them to be as broad and expansive as they possibly want to be, uh, so that in the event, we are able to go after any of those that's listed in our plan. So, if you look at that plan and you think, my goodness, this is an awful lot of projects, I don't think we're ever, well, you're, you're right. We, we just wanna include everything. And then, as opportunities come along and, and projects fall our way, then we're able to apply for them. And throughout our, each of our last five-year plans, we have always made adjustments mid-course. Uh, when, you know, if we miss something, if there's, but if there's something now that you don't see on there that you'd like to be on there, we'd wanna shoehorn it in. But we're hoping to get approval of this tonight, so that we can continue the process and everybody gets, four other communities are depending on one another's action on this here in the month of January.
All right.
Yeah, but just to reiterate, we did, yeah, since I've been here, we, we revised the plan for the Marina Grant, um, engineering study that we did. Uh, so, we amend it at any time, uh, if we so, uh, find a project, so.
All right. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any comment from the public on the Parks Master Plan? She's either making a comment or leaving.
Um, Joy Gash, President of the Chamber and one, five, one, nine, five, Lake Shore Drive. Um, I didn't realize this was on the agenda tonight, but, um, I really want to commend all of our five units of government. It used to be that these plans were submitted individually. One plan was done for each of the units of government. And about, um, I think this is the third time it has been submitted jointly between all five units of government. And it represents really Northwest Ottawa County and, and the spirit of cooperation and collaboration there has been between the five units of government. So, I would like to commend you for doing it and certainly applaud, um, the, um, looking at the future of our parks and our community, because they're so important to us all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, at this point, I'll close the public hearing. Comments from council?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. Uh, this is a very good way of doing it. I've been involved with it before when I was on NORA. And we did a kinda like a synopsis of all the parks in the neighboring area. And so, we don't duplicate services on that order, so it all, this is very good. I'm, I have to agree with Joy. By having all five units together and working on a plan together like this makes it so much easier, so that when we do go for grants, that we're not, we're not getting more soccer fields than we need or more baseball fields than we need or anything in that order, that we're all kinda figuring out what is best for the whole community and not just for one area. I do remember the times when it was, we were on our own. And it's, tell you, it's, makes it a little bit more difficult, because you're all fighting for one thing. Say, we all want more baseball fields, so we're all going to DNR hoping to get that grant, and none of us gets it. So, now, working together like this, we have a greater chance, each one of us, to go forward. So, I gotta commend them on keep going in this direction and keep moving forward. When it comes to recreation, we need to be one giant community when it comes to recreation. I think it's, uh, very highly recommended for any business that comes here, that we have good recreational facilities and that we don't have, it's run out all over. It works nice this way. So, I'm, I'm in support of it.
Okay, I thought, I thought you might have been.
Just a little bit. Kinda my pet peeve, I think.
I'm also in support of it. I'm glad, uh, all our communities are working together to, um, to do this park plan. Um, it looks very well, well-done to me, um, very supportive of it. Um, and, um, like Mike said, um, we don't wanna make sure we have, we, we don't have, uh, too many baseball fields or soccer fields, and we get a balance of everything in our tri-city area. So, I think it's a very good plan, um.
Time's up. That was for Joy.
A long three minutes.
I got Joy's time, huh? Okay. Anyways, uh, very supportive of it. It looks very good. I, and I'm, like I said, I'm glad all the communities are working together. And, and we are one big tri-city unit here. And when it comes to, um, our parks, I think it's very good to work together and cooperate with each other. And I'm just glad to see we're, we're doing this.
I echo the comments related to the collaboration amongst the various municipalities working together. I'm really glad to see that there were some survey work done by Hope College to solicit some feedback in each community. Really interesting results, I think, from what Grand Haven desired facilities. Number one was nature trails for hiking, but the second one that, that folks really were looking for is paved walking and biking paths. And I, you know, I think we really have to focus in on bike paths and walkability in all parts of the city. We have, uh, more and more aging in place that's occurring. Um, there's gonna be less reliance on motor vehicles, so that definitely, I think, you know, should be at the forefront. I'm sure this is an important document for seeking grant funds, and we have fantastic parks and amenities. We're very, very lucky, um, in our community and in the tri-cities area and what we have. The resolution did state that there's some advertising that was done. Um, just kinda wondering what some of that advertising was, what kinda participation there was.
Yes, the, uh, the advertising was the, um, the actual plan document, draft document that was done by Grandy Township on behalf of all five communities. So, I think it was done thirty days prior to tonight. It was done in December. Um, that it was available by off, uh, at all five communities.
Okay. What kinda notice was, like, given to people to know that it was there to, like?
I think it was a public advertisement in the Tribune.
In the paper. Okay, that makes sense.
Good.
Makes sense. Good. Definitely some great goals and objectives in the plan. I think we have some great ideas on our, on our projected lists. I, I seen one that, that maybe, may or may not be real supportive of, maybe a campground or something along those lines. But, uh, I'm sure he'll, he'll mention that. But glad to see our, our Parks and Rec Board had unanimous support for this as well, so.
Kinda the same thing as, uh, everybody else, a great collaboration opportunity. Uh, I was very impressed by the, uh, park and recreation inventory that was gathered together here. It's simply amazing when you, when you look at all the communities and everything there is to offer. Um, I actually read all hundred and eighty-two pages, so. Yeah, there's, there was a lot. Um, you know, Ryan mentioned a couple, uh, beach and swimming access came in a really close third. Playgrounds was fourth. Kayak, you know, water access was a real big thing. As you can imagine in this area, so. I think it's a great opportunity, and we should take every advantage of it that we can. Great job.
I'd like to echo most of that. The, uh, I think the plan is well-researched, well-written, highly collaborative, um, very intelligently done. And I think that it's a, it's a great plan for the combined Northwest Ottawa County communities. And the fact that the collaboration, the coordination is there is an efficient use of public resources. So, all that said, I think it's an excellent plan, as was commented. We do have in there one item, which is the Harbor Island Campground, which we've listed as a high priority item for the city of Grand Haven. Which, as you know, I promised some years ago, I would never cast a vote that would favor releasing such a campground. So, I'll be voting no on this tonight. It's a kind of unfortunate, 'cause I think it's an excellent document. And so, I commend everybody for all their effort, and I, I think everything else looks great.
Awesome.
Well, one thing I'd like to point out, too, is during that collaboration, uh, in the, in the Frost Research Center, uh, document, it talked about maintenance on their parks and how well we maintain them and how much, uh, the public, uh, expects us to maintain them at, at a high level. So, it was really good to see that, that they, that they see those facilities and they want those facilities to be maintained along with, you know, the improvements that they, uh, they outlined, so.
Yeah. Well, kudos to your staff and the work that you guys do to do that, to make it happen, so.
Very proud of our parks.
Yeah.
Have been, I'm sorry that you're not gonna vote, because it, because of our Parks Board decided that was high priority for them.
No, I was at, I was at that meeting.
But.
I know what was said.
You know, but that's theirs, that's their thing.
They said, they're going along with it because the city council made it their, their goal. That's what they said.
Oh. Sorry. Sorry you have to vote no on it, Bob, but it's a great plan. I'm voting yes.
It is, it is indeed.
We'll, we'll override you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'm ready to vote.
I think we're ready to.
You actually need a motion and second. You never did that.
We did, that's how we did.
That's right. We had a public hearing. I closed it. We, we kinda slid straight into this discussion.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
You didn't catch me this time.
There you go. I made it. Ryan seconded it, or Mike seconded it. Mike and Mike.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Manetta?
No. Okay, we're done with public hearings. Next item.
Next item is under new business. This is to approve a bid proposal of eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars from Prime New Hoff Engineers to plan beach surveys, organize a summary report of recommendations, and to develop bid documents and prepare applications for the property abandonment of the retired water wells located on the Lake Michigan Beach at the Grand Haven State Park. The administration recommends approval.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion by Fritz, second by Cummins. Is this a Derek explanation or is this a Pat explanation?
This is a Joe explanation.
Ah.
This is Joe.
Good evening. Joe Vandershtout, Water Facilities Manager. What questions do you have?
Any questions?
What's the downside to not taking them out?
Somebody getting hurt.
Somebody getting hurt.
Yeah, I, we, we looked at it a couple of ways. Obviously, the, the safety is the biggest concern, the urgency to get him removed. The ones that are exposed, those need to come out because of safety. State Park brought it to our attention. DPW was on it. Um, yeah, and I just don't see that exposure. It's taken thirty to forty years to see it because I remember starting in the mid-eighties and I remember seeing him back then being exposed.
I was just saying, it's not the first time they've been out.
No, they haven't. But I think now people have become more aware and we've got more people that come and visit the state park. But they just, you know, with safety, I think it's a major issue. So it's really the push and the urgency to get it done. Because we don't have the, the levity, the time here. We're trying to take advantage of the winter before we do get that influx of population at the state park. Just to help out the state park as much as possible. So we do have safety on our side. So that's really the two underlying reasons. Pryna Newhoff, uh, we've worked with those guys for years. They know exactly what's underneath that beach. They worked on all of our intakes since probably the late nineteen eighties. So they have a good, uh, record of what's happening on that shoreline. So we'll work closely with them. We'll see what they can come up with.
Now, this doesn't take out a single well. This does the bid proposal and study?
Well, they're gonna survey it and they'll make their recommendations, but I would assume the two that are exposed, obviously, will probably be the ones that will be removed. But we have another six wells on the beach that are possibly targeted to be exposed because we're supposed to lose at least another foot.
So for this eighteen, for this eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, we get two wells removed?
Two wells, well, they're gonna contract that out. They're gonna, they know that they identified those two wells, but the other six, they want to see where they are. Give us some recommendation, what our longevity is of that being exposed. And then we have to make a decision what we want to do with the rest of those wells, so. So right now, no, I don't have an answer of how much that would actually cost. But I know if the two wells that are exposed, definitely those will have to be removed.
Okay, but my question was, is removing those wells included in this price?
No, it's not. This is just engineering.
I didn't think so. That's why I asked it that way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. No, just the engineering services, so.
So that would have to be bid and then we'd have another request for?
Right, I'll be coming back to you, so.
Okay. Is that, is this the city's responsibility to pay for wall removal or is this now is in the, uh, cost is shared with the other communities?
The current plan is to use the, uh, replacement fund to fund this, so it's our entire group of communities. You know, our, our assets and liabilities are all co- jointly owned and our, our responsibilities are jointly held by all five units of government.
Okay.
This is not to, like, this is not to exceed price, so, so?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so. So it could go over this maybe, huh?
What's that, huh?
I said it could go over this eighteen, eighteen eight.
No, that, that is, it, that's, um, not to exceed price.
That's what I asked. Okay, all right, okay, it's not. Okay, all right, okay, good, okay.
Ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Call it all.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item is to direct staff to negotiate appropriate license provisions for rental space at the Grand Trunk Depot for the following displaced Chinook Pier tenants. Barefoot Daves, Grand Haven Beach Company, Peace Frogs, and Dairy Cream. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. The administration recommends approval.
Or motion?
So moved.
Or? Motion by Fritz, second by Scott.
So at your, at your previous meeting, you granted us permission to, um, request proposals from currently displaced Chinook Pier tenants for a temporary lease based in the Grand Trunk Depot. Upon releasing that RFP, we received seven proposals for our four available spaces. Staff reviewed all seven proposals in regard, um, to lon- longevity at Chinook Pier, compatibility with the space, um, requests within the proposals, current square footage at Chinook Pier, and more generally, just the pros and cons of the proposals we received. So this evening, we are asking for your permission to proceed with negotiating those license agreements with those proposed tenants before you today.
All right. Mike and Mike were about to discuss the, the seven proposals and you were comfortable with these four?
Yes.
And what's the impact on the depot building?
Well, there's a variety of things that I'm, I'm glad that we've got, uh, some of the proponents here tonight so that this can be discussed and, and, uh, hammered out a little bit in, in public session. The, a couple of things. One is that I did provide you in your packet, or I believe with a, a copy of some proposed costs of, of making the space ready, white box ready. And it's looking like about the amount of rental revenue we might get from these, uh, five tenants over the two season period will just about make us whole. You know, the amount of money we'll collect will just about reimburse us for what we need to put into the space in order to make it ready. You know, it, it seemed like this was gonna be very easy that we could just say, well, just let them go use that space for the couple of years and, you know. But we do need to do some work to get it ready. We gotta do some work on the doors. We gotta upgrade the electric. We have to do some work with the floors and the, that spiral staircase. There's a variety of items that we're going to want to do anyways before we use it for anything else anyhow. So I, I think it's money we would have had to have spent anyways. And the plus side is that, well, at least we'll collect it back from the tenant rents over the next couple of years. So I, I want that to be very clear because likely at a follow-up meeting, uh, I'll be asking you for authority to spend some money on the building. And we've already talked to some of the tenants about the types of things that they need to outfit it for their particular uses will be their responsibilities. But for us to set it up as a typical white box rental space, there is cost. The second thing that I really want to make sure we cover tonight is the length of the leases. Some of the tenants are looking at considerably higher investments in order to make it ready for their use. Particularly, uh, the tenant that we have proposing to occupy what we're calling C, uh, which is Dairy Cream, uh, on one end. And then the other end, uh, that we're just calling X, I guess, uh, which is the temptation space. Considerable investment there by the private owner and they were a little bit anxious about the length of time we were willing to offer them. And we definitely said it here. You couldn't have been more clear. You know, two seasons, October tenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, was when these leases would terminate. So I don't know if either Kelly or Russ or Renee wanted to express their concerns to you or their, their anxieties. But they, they could do that tonight if you wanted to hear from them. Um, you know, otherwise, we, we did talk about the possibility of a right of first refusal. Where if you were going to offer the space to anybody, they would get first crack at it or an option to add more years onto their agreement. You know, there's any number of ways this could go, but I think it's important to have that discussion openly with the, with the decision makers present. Rather than me trying to, um, channel my inner city council, uh, when I'm talking to these guys because we're trying to negotiate these things. And I'm saying, we don't, and the, the hangup we have is there's a lot of uncertainty. We don't know what's gonna happen with the space after the next season or two. We don't know what's gonna happen back at Chinook Pier. Uh, when they might have space to move back to and, you know, a lot of that discussion's gonna take place in the next month or two. You've, you accepted a grant tonight to pay for consultants to come on board and help us vision what that building's going to be. So probably in the next couple of months, you're gonna know a lot more, but they kind of need an answer now because they're being asked to throw thirty, forty, fifty, I don't know how many thousands of dollars at this project. So I, I don't know if you wanted to hear from them tonight. That's all I got, your honor.
Well, I don't have a problem with hearing from them. Kelly would like to go first.
Do I have to time her?
Just timing? I thought this was a question.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter. I, I, I haven't spoken extensively with Russ and Renee. But Pat is right. When you talk about moving a food service, um, fifty thousand dollars, I think, is going to be an underestimate of what we have to spend to get that space ready. There are a lot of not only building codes, but the food codes in terms of what we have to do plumbing wise and building wise is very extensive. Let alone HVAC. We're gonna have to bring in ten tons of HVAC just for that thousand square foot space. Just, we learned that today. And so when you're talking about that kind of money, and we looked at that space too, when that was out for bid too. You know, you talk about the windows and the walk-up windows and, um, you know, um, being able to be compatible. Certainly, if I'm going to throw that kind of money at that space, I would like some kind of assurance that you do like me and that you would like me to stay if I had the choice or if you had the choice. I don't know how we talk about that, but I've talked about that with Pat and Ashley a lot. This is not a soft landing. It's not anywhere near a soft landing. And if we were to move back into Chinook Pier, we'd have to pay again to move again. If we do a short-term option here, this is not where, how I would construct it for a long term. It would be even more expensive than that. So, um, I guess I'd like to know how you guys feel about that before we continue to talk with Pat and Ashley about that.
I can see where that would be a problem, you know, um, getting your, getting that to pay back that much money in two years. And, oh, and, and that'd be extremely hard to do. I, I, you know, and, and, and I've thought about that before and Pat and I talked about that a little bit. But, but I think that would be extremely hard to get, get your payback in a two-year period. I agree, so.
And part of us, I would like to say too, I don't know that I want to go anywhere for two years. I don't want, or to disappear for two years. That's also assuming that you would rebuild. Um, and to be able to continue my presence, that would be worth it to me on a long. I'm not here for two years. I, I've already been here for so long, you know. I'm not going anywhere. I am turning fifty this year, but, you know, I am not planning on retiring anytime soon. So, so what, it, he might be before me. He's older than I am. But, but it, right, exactly. So, so I guess that's the, you know, that, that would be worth it to us and that's the risk we have to take. But it is a real quick payback. I'm getting as long-winded as you guys.
I know that if it was my business and, and if I had to stick that kind of money into it, I probably wouldn't do it myself personally because I'm a lot older. But it's still, it's a large investment for such a short term and it's probably not fair to have you guys come in and, and, and invest. Especially, I know Russ down at the new part down there, we designed that to not be competitive with Chinook Pier. We put in all that stuff in there just to be service. That's it, you know, not to be, put in any kind of restaurant or any kind of food of any sort like there to be served and, and that there, it was just a simple for our, uh, beach chair, our chairs for there and just whatever, you know, for selling the things there. And only that is gonna have to have, it's brand new, but it's gonna need some extensive work also. And so that would be more acceptable for like a long term. I would, I would imagine so for down there because it's new and it. But when you're getting down there, we want to do remodeling of the, uh, depot. It would be nice if, if you're gonna give, if we could give you a longer term, that you work together on the, the inside. I don't really care what the inside, but the outside has to maintain it. So if you change windows or whatever else, I think that's what the design is, what they're gonna come back with on something like that on the outside for us. But the inside, I don't know what it's gonna come back as, but it's a tough decision for you guys as business owners. When you have to stick in, you know, I know it's gonna be over fifty grand sometimes because all the heavy electrical, air conditioning and all the food service stuff you gotta go through to get to it is gonna be really, really expensive. And only be there for two years and thinking, maybe if we do something down at the other end, you're gonna move back again, that's not gonna be a doable thing. You just, it, it's a losing proposition at your age. It really is. It, it, for any business, it would not be, it would not be conducive for good business.
Well, and, and that's our fear, you know. Uh, we go over in there, you know, uh, we had, there was an electrician in there, a plumber was there, you know. You're talking about tearing up floors, uh, reconcreting them, you know, floors has to be epoxy, the windows that are gonna be serving and health department requirements. There's no air conditioning in that C space whatsoever, is what I've been told. You know, I mean, there's ductwork there, so I, you know, but, um, you know, there's, there's things like that that, that are, that are large expenses that are large infrastructure expenses for that. If that were to be the case and then we were to move back, you know, or whatever like that, you know, then you'd have the same, if there was a new building, the same type of expenses. Who knows what rent would be or whatever at that point also too, back in this other space. These are, you know, and, and just because our, our, our collective businesses are very, uh, electrical, water, um, you know, air conditioning, mechanical, uh, intensive type businesses, you know what I mean? So that's our fears and my fear is to, also to go too much further. There's been no decision on buildings A, B, and C at, at one point. And I've discussed this too. I, I, I said that, you know, well, C's different from, from A and B. And they are different. It has a different crawl space and it has, it's different in that fashion. But in the same fashion, we all lived or sort of died together too. We all depend on each other to draw traffic down to Chinook Pier and stuff like that. And if, and if some or one of us are, are stuck there on our little, own little island, that's a, that's, that's a dangerous proposition too. So not knowing where, where, where the city's council is going with what they're doing with the buildings and that is a, you know, is a scary thing for us. You know, we can see that as a permanent solution moving forward or, you know, like that. I think, uh, both of us have, uh, have added a lot of energy to that area, along with other tenants there too. It's not, it's not just us. We've all, what's that? Right, and we have. David, if you wanna, if you wanna comment, you can go ahead and step on it.
Yeah, yeah, that way you can be on, on the mic.
You can get in a conversation too. State your name and what you do.
No, don't, don't back up anybody.
Don't back up. Come up and tell us your name and ask so they can have it for record.
Dave Ebonowski, Grand Haven Beach Company, hopefully. First of all, I, I plan on saying this, um, this is not the city's fault. Ashley, don't ever let her go. I can't believe how much this city who, this is not your problem. It's not your fault. You didn't do this. And you've been like on it, going above and beyond to help us survive. Now, I don't have the expenses these guys do. I, I feel for them. I'm just thankful that I was chosen for the building and, um, I wanna go forward with it. But I wanna, I, I don't wanna be just me. I want these guys with me. I want Kristen. I want Barefoot Daves. And I hope that if we do go back to Chinook Pier, you guys will go back too because these are the reasons of why I want to be down there. It's, it's a family down there, but I'll go wherever. But thank you guys for everything. Um, one thing I wanted to add in too is a possibility of upping the options to go through December thirty-first of twenty-one in case we want us to open for Christmas. Things like that, so. And if I can just say one more thing as part of all this, I know you have steps to go through. We've talked about this. For a lot of us, we have to order merchandise for the spring. That, being this time of the year, everyone in the country is ordering from the same manufacturers. It takes time to get that and we have to build out our space. So if there's a way to speed the process, negotiate, get leases, maybe even signed by end of this weekend, I was kind of asking a lot. But if I order merchandise and this lease doesn't go through, I'm gonna be Dave Ebonowski in a white van down by the river selling stuff. Out of my van, so. But again, thank you all of you. I hope that, um, we can move this process forward and I hope it works out for these guys as well. They're, they're, they're the reasons why I'm down there, so.
Okay. Let me just say too, I'm, I'm for extending at least one year for you guys. I don't think, I don't think you can pay it back in two. I really don't. So I think if we go three, you would probably do a lot better than, at least you would.
Or could you give us the option to be the first one in that space or the right of first refusal?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would certainly like to see language like that in our license agreement.
I, I fully agree with that also for some effect is that one time we were looking for a tenant
Correct.
down there anyways to, to fill a spot. And, uh, we did.
That might also affect how we lay things out. There are different choices in terms of, um, lots of different things.
But if, uh, you're gonna, if you're gonna invest that kind of money into the place and our building, if you're gonna invest money into it, just to make sure that you can actually operate a business in there, our obligation is to extend it a little bit and, and have work together with the architects that we're gonna have there. There might be some disruption a little bit here and there because they're gonna come in and that. But you're gonna have to understand that maybe we can do that during the winter months when you're not open. And if we have an option for you guys to move forward, we can work together. I, I'm sure, I'm just one council member. I'm just thinking all out here that if we can work together on this together, we can come up with a solution. I'm always trying to find solutions somehow.
I'm even trying to collaborate with him.
I know.
And we really, we're, we're our competitors, but yet, you know, we, we've had exclusives. They've had hard ice cream. We've had soft ice cream. And for many years at one point, maybe not so, but we've, 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 we work together with each other. And we both, we both have done, we both survived and, and added a lot of energy to that. I don't see why that can't be the same, same thing in that space over there in Kelly. I don't see why that can't be the same, same thing in that space over there, and Kelly and I have talked about, had a conversation about that even too. So, you know, those are the things, you know, I mean, that C space is really only set up for some type of window service business to begin with, you know what I mean? Which, which fits us well, but once again, those costs, I'm, even for a three-year term is, is, is fairly daunting, you know what I mean? And stuff, so I, you know, I, I don't know what we come up with as far as, you know, lease negotiations or whatever, but I think both of us would like the city council to consider these to be something of a longer term than potentially that, you know what I mean? Or options in, in language that, that give us a little more of a safety net than that, so, that would be our, our hope.
Mike or Ryan, thoughts?
Yeah, at first I, you know, it's like, I was a little concerned with the product mix, but you guys have, have already made it work down at Chinook Pier, you know, being in close proximity to each other, and obviously there's a ton of longevity there, showing that it works, so, I, I see this being successful in the depot as well. Certainly there's cost of the city on this as well, but look, you know, like Pat points out, we can recoup this cost through our, our rents, which is good, you know, and I understand the risks that you're, you're facing, and you guys are certainly in a tough spot, you know, so are we as far as our, our plans of this building, we're spending money to this, to, to research what we'd like to do with it long-term, you know, so, you know, I still want to see that studied and worked through, and I don't, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be careful not to take any approvals today, you know, to create an argument that the depot shouldn't be used, you know, differently later on. I'm fine with that being considered one of the options, and then sorting through that, and, and we're gonna have a wonderful opportunity to, hopefully, if you choose to even put this kind of investment in, to, to see how it goes, but, and, and, you know, I'm okay with looking at, you know, some, some right of first refusal language, or something that, that may make you feel a little bit more comfortable, you know, I'm glad that we have the space available, and that we can help our displaced, you know, tenants, it's absolutely the right thing to do, but for me, I think, I guess, what would very much be conditioned on this being a temporary arrangement at this point, with the goal of supporting, you know, local businesses while we work through our next steps, and, and, and that you can better plan for the long term, and we can better plan for the long term. I'm just, I don't want to make a premature decision on the long-term future of the depot, there's been a lot of many months of discussion on it as it is, there's more that needs to be done, and we're paying money to, to, to work through that. I'm fine with, again, looking at this type of setup in the future as, as a long-term option, but I, I think it's important for us to do our due diligence on other potential uses of it for, you know, as well, so, that's all I got.
The C space, which is the newer addition that was put on several years ago, I don't see too much of an issue with moving that to maybe a longer term, or looking at it as being a longer term. When we move into the old, original part of the depot building, as Ryan has said, that we've been looking at a lot of plans for, it's an old building, it needs a lot of things done to it. Everybody up here knows that, Pat knows that, I mean, you guys are becoming aware of that, and, you know, to put that kind of an investment into it without having some type of a guarantee, I mean, you're, you're talking some air conditioning units and all this stuff you have to move in, I'm not sure where you're gonna put those. I'd for sure like to see where those are gonna be before anybody moves forward with a lot of this. I know I wouldn't want to go into a long-term agreement for it and have that one area being what's holding up the rest of it from being, you know, redone, redeveloped, repurposed, moved on to something that very well could house you at some point in time, but we don't really know that until we go through everything and get it done, and we can't do that when it's full of people, or businesses. So, it's a tough decision, no doubt about it. You know, the, the first refusal language, I have no problem with that, as long as you understand that that situation may arise where there may not be anything to refuse or accept, because we make the decision to move on. It's a tough pill to swallow either way, and like you say, a lot of the improvements that you have to make or want to make, I'm not quite sure how they're gonna fit, or where that kind of equipment's gonna go. I mean, it can't go on the roof, obviously, so, I mean, those are my concerns with it. Like I say, building C not so much. I was part of the committee with, with Councilman Fritz that kind of picked the people to go into A and both the B sections. They largely were determining factor was they required very, very little change. They could come in with some shelves and racks and up and running. It works out good for them, not so well for some of the other folks, I'm afraid, but, I mean, I'm, I'll stick with it and we'll do whatever we can, but I, I just, I can't see it as a long-term solution.
You're saying that it, it potentially could be, but at this point right now.
Building, building C really, really doesn't affect what happens to the rest of it, because I don't believe there's anything going to be done to that, so I, I wouldn't have an issue with extending that for some period of time, but when you're talking about the original part of the depot, where we're talking about doing the remodeling, you know, and gaining all the information on, and trying to decide what to do with it, because it is in poor condition, that's one where it's a little less likely that, in my opinion, that it could be a longer lease. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just what I see right now.
You have something else?
Just a quick question. A lot of the proposals mentioned signage, what are you, what are we envisioning as far as, you know, what are we gonna allow signage-wise? Like, what do we?
Good question. You know, we're, I think it would be a good idea to get the group together, if you guys approve this tonight, we're gonna want to get together with all of those that are proposing to be in the space, and talk about commonality of signage, what I think some of my concerns are from listening to the Historic Commission and some of the things they've talked about. You know, I think it would be a good idea to come up with a sign convention that agrees with the depot, that all the tenants can agree with. As far as location, do we do freestanding signs that are not attached to the building, or signs that hang down from the awning that project out? You know, those would be some discussions we'd want to have with the tenants, and, and like I said, maybe run it by the Historic Commission, just to have them take a look at it and make recommendations, not necessarily approve or not approve, just look at it and say, well, here's what we like, here's what we don't like, but, you know, I don't, we do have a sign ordinance, and we will abide by that, whatever's in the sign ordinance, you know, we have to abide by that, and I would expect we'd want to treat our own tenants just like anybody else, and, and follow the rules that we have, but we're also the owner, so we want to make sure that it doesn't conflict with our ideal about what the depot ought to look like. That.
And that's one more step along the process to not be unable to open in a timely manner as well. The more regulations and steps that you put on us, the longer it's going to take to actually open by season. Sorry, just had to pipe.
Weren't we, weren't we looking for a, a long-term tenant at that end at one time anyways?
Yes.
And wouldn't, I mean, we're looking at it, and I mean, it was one of the proposals at one time to be a long-term tenant at that certain loca, location at that end. I have to agree with Mike on the new, on the new addition, I don't think we'll be looking at that in far as renovations of anything, so that, I'm not even looking at that part of the building right now, but I'm looking at a long-term tenant at one end for sure, for now.
So, I, I guess, you know, I'm trying to hear all the discussion, because then we're gonna go and embark and talk to the potential occupants about it, and nail some things down, and get some documents signed. The space in the old part of the building, we could propose language that says, well, you can be in there, but at some point, we're gonna come in and do a renovation project, at which time you're gonna be closed for a period of time, because we're gonna have to have that whole building to redo everything, and that's when we talked about having a long-term tenant that might exceed a, a short period of time, you know, not be a temporary one, we would just have to negotiate that lease, recognizing that, that you may be displaced for a period of time while we do this overall big project, but what I'm hearing Mike Dora say is that he's not as concerned about it in the new space, that that could be a longer term lease, that there would be some agreement on city council to do a longer term lease in the new space? I, I wanna know what I'm getting into here.
Is this depot study that we're doing, is that space included in that, the study?
No.
So, that space, the concession space at this point is?
Separate, yeah.
As far as I know, the, what Progressive A and E is, what we just hired them to do, and just accepted a grant to pay them with, must do a lot of programming, a lot of study on how the depot might be used. Yes, we had a concept three years ago for putting a permanent tenant in the, in the end there by the, by the sun dial, and by the grass river, the area that you're looking at, Kelly, that, we had, we had a proposal some years ago, and you.
Yep, two years ago that I put in a.
You responded to that.
Yep. So, that's been the pickle of this proposal and this negotiation, quite honestly, is the long-term versus short-term, and for both of us, for.
Right, and so, so when you, so when you called me and asked me, what do you think about, what do I think about using the depot for a place for people from Chinook Pier to land, temporarily at least?
Yep.
I said, well, it's kind of complicated, because there's a lot of balls in the air. There's a lot of things that have changed since that original time.
And I certainly understand that.
But it was important to us to try to find some way to accommodate whoever we could.
Correct.
And because you had expressed an interest before, we said, well, let's go, let's talk to Kelly first about that space.
Correct.
See what we could do, but also with the notion that because we're embarking on this, this study, this programming effort, we, that may or may not be where we end up, is to have temptations in the end of that building, or something else.
Well, and that's why I would, I'm sorry to interrupt you, the, that's why I would ask for at least the right of first refusal. If a long-term tenant is slated to be in that building, and I have put the investment into that building, I would at least like the, the chance to have it be me.
Right, and I, and as, as others have said, I think the right of first refusal is something we could do, as far as promising the space for a long period of time. I don't know that we're prepared to do that, because we just don't know how it's going to be used in the future, but if it got used as we envisioned years ago, anchor tenant in one end, and then a lot of open space, or multi-use space, then that could work out. I just wanted to be cautious, and I said this before, that we, we don't know how the space is going to be used, and, you know, you, if you're looking at big investments, that you might end up having very temporary use of, so, it's, if it's a, if a right of first refusal gives you comfort, then we could probably look at that. If it's a assurance that you can be there as long as your equipment lasts, well, I'm not so sure that works, so, I guess that's kind of.
Some of it's almost as old as I am, but not all, that's for sure.
We're all getting older as we sit here.
[laughing].
As far as the building C portion, the new portion that we added on, I guess, again, I'm not so sure that that has much relevance to the study. The whole point of the study was to integrate the depot with the stadium, and make them kind of work together, and hopefully with minimal impact to the building.
Just.
Just stretching?
Yeah.
I suppose we could take a break after this, but.
No, no, we're good.
Okay. We'll power through. I mean, if the, if, if, if the idea of a first refusal is, gives you some comfort, I guess I don't have a problem with going there. Pat and I talked about it earlier, if the need is for an assurance that you can be there three, four, or five years, I don't think we can say that, so, it's, it's kind of a difficult thing, and there's too many things that we don't know at this point in time. The building C portion, I guess we could be more comfortable saying it could be a longer term. That's why we are for two seasons, because we didn't, we figured it would take some time to resolve Chinook Pier, and if it ends up being some little pop-up structures, and if it ends up being a brand-new building, if we somehow got out, got out the building and repair it, I mean, all those things, we haven't really decided yet, we'll talk more about that in a little bit, but right now, I think what's before us is, what are, what are we going to negotiate for leases?
Okay.
So, I don't know if that gives you enough to go on there. I think the two guy, I think the ones in the middle part of the building who just need racks for merchandise aren't really that big of an issue, but these two, with the, all the mechanical equipment they need.
No, this is excellent, and I'm glad that everybody was here to, or at least you guys were here to hear this, and so when we get together, you'll understand what I'm trying to deliver back to council, certain questions, I have to, I have to put actionable things in front of you, and tonight you did, what you're being asked to vote on right now is to offer licenses to four tenants, much like what you already authorized me to do with temptations, and we'll get all these details worked out, and then we're gonna present them to the mayor and clerk. You know, I'm asking you to authorize signatures, so we just go ahead with this and get her done, and I understand what you want, and right now, I'm only authorized to go up to two seasons through October 10th, but anything other than that, I'd want to bring back here, right of first refusal, additional years in unit C, whatever that is, you know, I assume you'll be hearing from the same group again on February 3rd.
Okay, and, and when those prayers came up as, you have to leave Chinook Pier, maybe we can make this work, and it was no guarantee that it did work, it was something we hoped would work, so I'm still hoping it does work.
Hey, interrupt. Would it be possible to just extend that if different tenants want to stay open just two extra months in 2021, just if they want to work open till Christmas season, and, so.
Can you make room for Santa?
I'm working on it right here. I might be Santa.
No, you personally.
No, I mean, oh, because Santa's gonna be in there, yeah.
Well, potentially, and we may have Santa this coming December as well.
He wears my logo on his outfit, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably be in the lease that we negotiate, you know, after the season, there's going to be something like Santa Claus, he was in there this last year, and Santa reported back to us following the holidays that he was grateful for that space.
Yeah, that worked great.
And I don't want to be on the naughty list, but, so that, that's just the type of thing that we'll have to talk about when we lease, and I, I would assume city council would consider that. There's, you know, the, the problem we would have, and the reason we picked October 10th, is if we're, we've got everything lined up and we want to do our project that fall, we're gonna want to get in there as quick as we can, so we can knock it out and have it ready for the next spring.
There's actually another tenant that mentioned it, I was speaking on that person's behalf, so.
Oh, asking for a friend, okay.
Heard that story before.
That is up in the air as well.
So, I think I did get what I need.
All right.
In terms of direction.
Very good.
So then, do we need?
Thanks again.
Do we need more discussion here, or should we, are we ready to vote?
I guess before we vote, I, you know, I'd just like to take a quick moment and, you know, thank Ashley for the time she has put in on this, and the abuse that she has had to take verbally and on the phone from some folks, so I appreciate that, I'm sure, as well as the rest of council, so, good job.
Yes, let's give her a hand, huh? Thanks, Ashley.
Not very adequately embarrassed, I think we're ready to vote.
Uh, no, it's, it's honest to God, everybody I've talked to has said, it's been just a God-sent I have her here, so, thank you for digging in and working hard on it and trying to make it work. Actually, I, I can't, I can't express how much the people in the town has been talking about it. It's not just the tenants down there, but the other people are saying, man, you know, you do a fantastic job, so, keep it up, you're doing good. Pat, you're treating her well. You know?
Be more, I'm just beaming. Taking really good care of people. And I sit all day, I, I sit all day, every day, listening to how she's treating the folks, and she really does, and she takes it home with her, I tell her not to, but I know she does, so that, I think it means a lot to her, she really appreciates that.
Okay, well, thank you. Linda, could you call a roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is to set nine items as target priorities for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year as follows. Save snowmelt, infrastructure, I'm sorry, save snowmelt, infrastructure to reevaluate, reevaluate priority lists, long-range flooding, high-water plan, community-driven energy solutions, legacy cost review, regional transportation, Chinook Pier Solutions, airport and parking issues. The administration recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
So, move in support.
Motion by Cummins, support by Fritz.
I, I, I hope we can keep this brief. I think these nine items are items that the public can be fully aware are important to you, we can work towards in the coming year, and you can look at the rest of them, it doesn't mean those are off the table, they're still on the table, but I think these are good statements to make publicly, that this is what our goal, so I think you did a great job, and I appreciate everybody getting back with me and, uh, helping me rank these, and I've, I can get you the detail if you want to see how everybody fell in on each of these, but, you know, I think these are very effective statements that I, I encourage you to make tonight.
Yeah, I always thought we would have that detail, but I have no argument with the list.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
I said, I thought we would have that detail by about now, but I have no disagreement with this list.
Okay. Sorry, I meant to get that to you, that's my, my shortcoming.
Well, you didn't have to admit it now.
What, what I did was I just took the nine, I didn't want to go much higher, and there was just a good convenient break-off point after these nine. And I, I can send that out to you, you can see the numbers and how it stacked up, and anybody else can see them as well.
Okay, fair enough.
I think they're fantastic priorities for the year, there's certainly a lot of them, there's, have heavy lifts, and there's a lot of planning and multi-year impact to them. There's some that have some immediate decisions, you know, our long-term flooding, snowmelt, our community-driven energy solutions, these are all fairly immediate decisions, I'm glad to see them all make the list.
Yeah, I had a, a difficult decision narrowing them down to, you know, the requested number also. Uh, there was a lot of good choices on that list, or, I know, I had, I had some, everybody did, that didn't make the cut because there were other things that popped up that needed immediate attention. Um, so, I, but I, I think it's a good list, I think it, uh, it's going to require a lot of energy to, to work through it, but I think it's possible to do.
Some of those that were on there, we can handle in other ways, like, uh,
Yep.
So the Parks Department, we can, we can get with, with the, with, with that, and, and some, some areas where, where Pat knows that we have priorities that we, that we put down and, uh, and, um, the budget restraints, we can do that at budget time, so. There's, there's things we can do, you know, then that, uh, that they don't have to be on top of our list, but we're still going to do them, you know, and when, uh, budget time comes and, and other, other things come up, so, yeah.
Anything?
Only thing I'm disappointed is that the campground didn't make it, Bob.
Well, you know, that was.
Look at, look at.
It'd be underwater.
It'd be underwater by now.
I'll keep nailing it.
All right, so, so, so now we got our list, let's get it done.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, let's vote.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. We are to report by city council.
Well, I attended the, uh, MML training with, uh, the mayor, Ryan, and, uh, Pat McGinnis, and they definitely provided a lot of useful information and provided a very valuable service for everybody. I also attended the, uh, Historical Conservation District Commission meeting, and, uh, they have a lot of interesting public involvement projects on their agenda. It sounded like a lot of fun stuff coming up, so. Pretty much it for me.
Thank you.
Very much enjoyed the newly-elected officials' training, and, uh, Bob was on the panel, and some other, uh, this was, um, Fairiesburg Mayor, and, uh, Rapids Mayor, and Walker's Mayor, so they all had some good feedback, had some good, good sessions and very good information. Uh, attended the Rotary Lunch, uh, uh, honored the Rotarians and non-Rotarians for all their work in putting out flags during the various holidays and making it look great, so a big thank you to them again. Uh, met with Boy Scout Pack Thirty Thirty Two, they had, uh, earned some patches, and they had to meet with somebody that, um, selected or, uh, worked in government, and so you can imagine the nine and ten-year-olds were so thrilled to find out what we do here, uh, as city council, and keeping their attention with those conversations. And then, lastly, I attended the, uh, the BLP meeting, um, uh, obviously we got a very lengthy memo today that needs more time to digest from our BLP manager, and, um, I think I'll share a lot of my comments maybe till our, our next council meeting, but I will say that I am happy that we do have a joint session scheduled with the BLP. Um, uh, although I would, um, I think it's much needed, I think there's a lot to sort through, although I would like to see that joint session be rescheduled to occur before their next meeting, not happen after their next meeting when they're already making a decision on this, this notice of intent. I think, um, our, our two bodies could have a lot of, I think, good discussion on the proposed language, um, that's in that notice of intent, and, uh, and it deserves that discussion, um, so I, I make that ask, that if we can, we get that rescheduled before their next, actual BLP meeting, um, I think that would be more ideal. I, I think from hearing their discussion and, and looking at, uh, the resolution that was in place in November two thousand and eighteen, that maybe they need, we need an updated resolution to the BLP, it's a new general direction. Um, they're not able to live up to the old language, um, you know, that, that, that plan with the hundred million dollar, thirty-six-megawatt plan is just not feasible. Um, they're not able to provide a majority of the capacity, uh, for that resolution and their commitment, so I think that needs to be looked at again. Uh, I want to second the mayor's comments from the last meeting and ask, you know, and, and they asked, uh, that the BLP just be just as transparent as council is. Um, you know, don't just post an agenda, let's post our full meeting packets and documents on their website, so they're readily available for the public to, to review and, and see what's going on and see, you know, what's, what's behind some of the, um, decisions. Um, and for me, really, it breaks down to, you know, we need, I think we just need to slow some things down, make sure the council and BLP board are on sync on some things, uh, and then, uh, it's important that we're, you know, thoroughly engaging the public throughout the process to make the best decision for the community, which we just set a goal for, community-driven energy solutions. I think that could go a long way with that, just having some discussion, so, that's the short of it.
Thank you.
I agree, I was there too, and, uh, I heard, uh, heard the arguments back and forth, and, uh, pretty good attendance there, um, but some very important decisions going to be made by the Board of Land Power over the next, um, few weeks. And I think, uh, I think you're right, Ryan, I think maybe we should try to meet with them before they make those decisions, get our, get, get, like, get our input anyways, so. I, I'm not a, you know, I'm not, not objective to that at all, but, uh, but, um, I think, uh, I think they, they got a lot of things to think through, I, I mean, like you said, it's going to be very costly if we're going to, if they're going to provide all of our power for us that, uh, that we set forth, but I think it's important that we have, have a plan there that, uh, they are going to provide some power for us, so. But I think, uh, I, I would, um, be glad to participate in some kind of discussion with that, the Board of Land Power, and find out where we're at with that, and, and give, give them a little direction where we're still at too.
Done?
I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's see, I also attended the dinner, the Rotary, and I got to say thank you to the Rotary for all they do for our community. There's a lot of projects they put out, did for us and that, so we've been very fortunate to have something like that. And, uh, also for the people that went out and put the flags out, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers, and not only just the Rotary, but the ones that volunteered to go out there every day, every time we have put a plant, a flag out there. They're there early in the morning, and they're late at night, they're still putting them, picking them up and putting them down, so. We're all, it's a great thing. That was a fun, it's, it's not like I don't know anybody there, but, uh, most of them are all good friends of mine. So it was quite interesting to listen to some of their conversations. Also, I attended the Planning Commission this past week, and they just had a few things on their agenda, which was simple ones, retaining walls, which is an ongoing thing for this town, so I want to say thank you for them. And, uh, we had the Wine About Winter, I did pass through there, I didn't see anybody I knew right well, even already seen me. The wife and I walked, just kind of walked through, I didn't enjoy into the spirits or nothing, but it was well-attended, you had to get down there. They were parked around my house, they were parked in the parking lots, the county parking lot was full, so I want to thank Jeremy and them guys for, uh, DDA, for working so hard to get people down there, and it was a fantastic turnout for it, so. It was quite interesting, it was a good night, and it's, every time we throw an event like down there, it's just been crazy, it's just really brings it in. Especially this time of year, you see a lot of local people down there, and that's what I like to see, and I actually did see bags in people's hands. It's even a better thing when you see them buying things, besides just coming down and enjoying the evening, but they're actually, their businesses were open and, uh, people were buying things, so it was really, really good. And also, uh, one that's got brought up, I've been talking to Mr. McGinnis about the weight limits on the Third Street Bridge. Uh, one of the neighbors were here talking about the double-bottomed trucks and that hauling in and out of there all the time. I don't want us to see in the same situation that we have over in Fairiesburg with our bridge, it's, it, it was over three million dollars to build that small little bridge over there, I think it was when we did it back when we first started. And you start hauling double-bottomed, heavy-loaded, over top of the bridge all the time with any, without any weight restrictions, we're going to beat that up, as if you haven't looked at Jackson Street. Jackson Street now is one of our newer streets, but if you look at it with those heavy trucks on there, it's starting to get the little dips in it. If you go down there on a nice day, if you, Mike, you take your Corvette down there, because I take mine down there, you can feel them. Uh, it's starting to get that in there, and it's, it's not from just the traffic of cars going to the beach and back and forth, but it's just heavy trucks that are going over there. I really think if there's some way we can possibly do is to restrict the heavy loads coming across that bridge and heading down to Jackson Street, it would be, for us in the long run, it'd be saving us some money, because I think not only are we going to be have to raising our roads to take care of water, but we'll have to replace a bridge over the water that we're trying to stop coming in. You never get to it, so why replace the road if you're not going to take care of it? Um, other than that, I just want to say it's been quite an eventful night tonight, so thank you guys for sticking up so late.
Sure, that's what we're here for.
We're not done yet.
Yeah, oh, you're not done?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Well, if we get Derek to raise those roads, we can get those double-bottomed trucks off from that bridge.
Oh, he's here, I was sending him an email.
Still there.
Covered his shirt up. He covered his shirt up so you can't see him.
I mean, that's, that's been the big problem, is that they've been trying to find alternate ways to go, and.
There's nowhere to go, but.
If we can get them to stay on the, uh, toll drive, they can get to, uh, beacon, going under the bridge and around.
If we can get a low limit on the bridge though, too, so make sure, I don't know how you enforce it, but it's, it's difficult.
I'm sure we know the design requirements of the bridge, but, you know, they will get beat up over time. So I think the, I think the real answer is take care of business on Harbor Drive and fix those roads.
Toll road, there you go.
Toll road.
Well, they did, they talked about that in Fairiesburg.
Yeah, I don't think they went that way. All right, well, I attended a lot of the same meetings everybody else did, I went to the, um, the Rotary Lunch and handed out little pins for all the people who placed flags, and I was really appreciative of what they did. Went to the MML training with these guys, and the BLP meeting was long and interesting. And the thing about the notice of intent they're discussing is it doesn't really, it doesn't really make decisions, it doesn't, it doesn't really lock them into decisions, it's basically reserving the amount of money, the intent of was to reserve the amount of money that they could service debt without raising the rates. They backed their way into that number and then put a list of things they, they could do with that money. That's really how that, that's really what they had to do there, and the rest of it was all in flux. They know they're going to tear the plant down, they're not going to, they know they're going to remediate the site. They know certain things they have to do, and they want to get those things going before they have to start eating their working capital. And so, the rest of it, like what kind of plant do we build, if any, that's not really the decision, that's just one of the options. And so I think there's time to discuss and decide as far as meeting with them sooner or later, or they have people who are out of town, and there, you know, it might be possible, we could certainly ask. But I think that the, getting past this notice of intent that they tried to pass twice now doesn't necessarily lock them into a given course of action. Yes, we just adopted a community-driven energy solutions goal, and we need to go there, we need to find out what that best answer is. The answer is going to be partially technical-driven and partially community tolerance-driven, and it's going to be partially cost. There's a lot of some pieces to that. But, um, I look forward to having a joint meeting with them, having this discussion, and I think there'll be, it'll continue beyond the joint meeting into fairly lengthy study and public outreach, and all those things have to happen. If they can come up with an earlier meeting time, we can probably figure out some way to make that work. Otherwise, what I'm seeing is, right now, is that they have some things that they really need to do just to take care of business.
Disagree a little bit with that, though.
Okay.
We can discuss it.
But, you know, that, that's the way I see notice of intent working. It's, uh, what you put on your list is what you can service with that, with those bonds.
It's also the notice to the public and their right to referendum on what is being put out there.
Okay.
If they lose that right after that forty-five-day period goes away, so they would lose their ability to say, we don't actually want that, or spend money on that, if it's.
Well, that's kind of, I think, it's kind of important to get that forty-five-day clock ticking, so. Because it's hard to back up.
I agree for things that, yeah, we could have others.
Okay, that's a different discussion. Um, and, um, and I attended a ribbon-cutting for At Home Real Estate in their brand-new building, really nice, so. Pretty much all I've got.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Uh, first I want to thank Father Chuck for sticking around as late as he has. I, I joked with him before the meeting about the length of mass, I think I'm going to be paying, we're going to be paying for this four-hour, I'm going to have to go on Good Friday and make up for this. But, uh, I, I, I wanted to give Ashley and Tony a chance, I, it's very important, I'm sorry about the late hour, uh, but we've got a lot of information on the Chinook Pier projects, Ashley's been spending countless hours, as have I, as have many of you. I know you've been Googling and listening and paying attention to all this mold talk, and there's nothing bigger in town right now, I, as far as the city's concerned, than getting this worked out and coming up with a solution, so, Ashley, could you share some of the, um, detail that you've come up with, I don't know, did you want to walk through this chart?
I can do that. So, when it comes down to it, the work that needs to be done at Chinook Pier can really be broken down into these, into these three categories. So you have the mitigation, which is fixing the crawl space issue, um, remediation, cleaning up the mold itself, and then restoration, which is restoring the building materials that would be, um, essentially removed during the mold remediation. Um, so on the screen, you can see the cost breakdown for each category with the estimates we have received to date. And the figures you see on the far right are an average of each category of work that we took. So given the number of unknowns, you may see some variation in scope with especially the, the restoration category. There are just so many unknowns, it's difficult to quote, um, a hundred percent accurately. Um, so if the truth were to lie somewhere in the middle of these estimates that we've received, uh, when it comes down to it, we still anticipate a projected total project cost of probably close to nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In order to provide further clarity to the figures we've gathered, given the variance among the, the estimates, we asked Aben Marsh as an outside party to review the estimates in work slated in these, in these quotes here. And in an extensive review of these estimates, Aben Marsh has essentially confirmed that in appropriately addressing these three components of work that needs to be done, um, we could, sorry, let me clear that out. We could probably fairly expect a cost range of approximately, um, eight hundred and forty thousand to one-point-three million, which is where, what we initially anticipated with our initial estimates. And in the review, they provided us with kind of four encapsulating options that we could look at moving forward based on, uh, the review they did. And I'll ask Tony to come up and speak to his four points he identified in their report.
I'm just going to say those benches are surprisingly comfortable for three and a half hours, you guys. Name's Tony, we're with Aben Marsh, most of you know me, some of you welcome to the council. What we've done through this last week and a half is basically did a little bit of review of what you've gotten from Fishback before, from their testing results, the couple proposals you've had, we brought up two people off our architectural staff, myself and one of our structural engineers that actually do onsite with the predons, take a look what we can see, and kind of try to put all that stuff in together for you guys to help try to make a decision how you want to move forward with this. Um, the first one, as you see, is just going in per the proposals you've got and, and getting the, the, what I will call the the threat from the mold to public health and to the people in that building out of the way, and you're three to five hundred thousand dollars on that, just to get that out of the way without for mediation. To get to, and this is the issue we found when we were on-site, that's really what you need to be aware of. The crawl space itself only has a two-inch, what we call mud slab on it, so it is not in good shape, it's broken up, that's where your water's coming in from there. What you've been given for, um, pumps is actually just putting in basically pumps without any holes, you're not going to get the right drainage, they're going to burn up their household. Really, the only way to do this properly and to be candid with you guys, if we looked at it, there's two main problems with the design of the building, first is there's no ventilation in those crawl spaces, so the water that sat in there had no ventilation whatsoever. Second thing is water stood in that basement for, we don't know how long, but from the evidence we could see for a very long period of time. All the wood material down there is untreated, so everything that's been, the water's gotten on it, and we're talking right up to the joists. And once the water gets in the, the buoy, the buckles and everything on those joists, you lose thirty percent of the structural integrity once the saturation level hits about nineteen percent. Based on the amount of water we saw in there, you're at that level. So, candidly, we can go in there, we can dry all that out, but you are going to get rot in those wood members that are there now. Those are not going to keep standing the test of time. The best way to deal with this problem once and for all, it's, it's water table coming up and down, that's what we're dealing with here, is actually based on our structural engineer's recommendation, and this which gets into number two here, is go in there, remove all the structural elements that we know are bad. We don't have to tear the whole building down, we can actually get a Bobcat in there, do some helical piles to support the extra weight, and actually fill that entire crawl space area, and then concrete floor basically throughout the entire thing. That'll once and for all make sure that you are not able to have the same issue returned again. We can clean it all up like you can, but if the water gets back in that crawl space, pretty high likelihood, you're going to be facing the same issue again, candidly. Uh, this is a way to address it, it's a little more expensive on the demolition side, so doing some very selective demolition, removing the walls and that sort of thing, to get in there, to remediate everything, to get it all tied back up and put back into place. Now, some of the costs, you see an option two, mitigate some of the costs in option one, because they're going to be removing walls and floors that got mold all over them now, so you won't have to be doing that remediation. So between eight hundred and thirty thousand and one-point-three million extra, you can deal with all that stuff. Um, the next thing we looked at was, okay, they're, they're thirty-some-year-old buildings, and these are just, we're laying out your options, we're not saying that this is good, this is bad. Just go in there, demolish all the buildings, fill up the slab like we were talking about, and build three new buildings, two, three thousand square-foot buildings, and. Just go in there, demolish all the buildings, fill up the slab like we were talking about and build three new buildings, two three-thousand square foot buildings and one thousand square foot building. Depending on what you do for fit, finishes, build out, all that stuff, you're gonna be about two-point-four to three-point-four million dollars. So that's, if you went in there and raised everything, that's that number for a decision-making process. The fourth option that we kind of came up with to consider is go in there and obviously we've talked about millions of dollars in infrastructure needs in this community right now. Now we're talking about another two million dollars, one million, however you wanna throw around up here. Do you do something where you go in there and you demo everything and you put out a proposal to private developers? Is it some kind of creative joint, public-private thing where, give us proposal, we want you to rebuild on these things, what are you gonna do for the city? So the city's getting something either percentage of revenue, monthly, you know, license payment for that. That's your fourth option. The one thing I can say between these four options here is, we would not recommend doing the mitigation stuff without addressing the crawl space issues. If you are doing that, more than likely, we're gonna be having the same conversation a year from now, guys. So if you are gonna go with the mitigation, we highly recommend addressing the crawl space stuff. Once you're at that point, how do you wanna go? Right now, we're at planning level numbers. We're a little overly, we're not conservative, but how we do is we start planning level numbers here and as we work through design and we get a better feeling of what soil conditions are and all that, we tighten those numbers up as we go through the process. But for policy decisions, these are some really good numbers you can be confident in, to one of these courses you can take. I went through a lot of things very quickly there. You saw the report, I hope that we did, so it's got everything laid out. The bottom of page three gets into what is our biggest concern with those structural elements underneath and you can kind of see we did the side-by-side with all these numbers on options there. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Well, the thing that I thought was most telling was when your structural engineers said that the wood joists that support all the internal partitions, mechanical equipment, floor loading and all that were failing and that they were basically not salvageable. 'Cause I think that the lower-end mitigation and restoration concepts were based around keeping those structural elements and just sealing them and coating them and preserving them. And if that isn't possible, then the structure would just become the shell. And if it's just a shell, then putting a lot of money into preserving an old shell with new insides.
And Scott LeBlanc, who did the structural analysis, who's our main structural engineer, just to get you the idea of his CV, he did the last structural engineering, last three buildings at Notre Dame. So he is recognized in the industry as he knows what he's talking about when he looks at something. So he looked in there immediately, it was like, we got a problem here, here and here, based on his initial stating he saw. And then every crawl space he looked at more was seeing the same things.
So now the structure of building C is different. I don't believe it has those deep trusses. It has a dirt floor crawl space, which is moist, but doesn't hold water. But it also has, I don't believe the wooden structure was down in the water in that one.
Correct, yes. That is, we were comfortable with the structure on that. You still have to decide if you're gonna do something different with buildings A and B. Do you wanna put forty thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars into C to get it ready for the season? Or you wanna dress all three buildings at once? But you could get C up and operational in a different manner than those other two buildings. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I kind of gave up on buildings A and B after talking to your structural guy, but it looked like building C was, whether it's worth the cost or the investment is a different question. But it's salvageable for, not a fortune, but for an investment. And then we have to make sure that there's still people in it.
What we found really interesting is when these buildings were built, it was when we had high water in eighty-six, so the foundation must've been held in up just enough that it wasn't getting in there and over the years is that mud slab has cracked and settled. So three years, four, yeah, okay, seven, eighty-six, okay.
Well, it already endured high water levels, at least at the early in life. They're likely to be even higher now. And I think the, I think that the option for for basically de-watering the crawl spaces was, was the option, setting some sump pumps, some drains. It wasn't to seal those crawl spaces, it was just to keep moving the water out as it comes in.
And with the, with the sump pumps we saw, proposed, our concerns with those were, we didn't feel they were robust enough and they didn't have redundancy systems. So that one pump broke down, you didn't have another pump to be able to pick it up or any kind of alarms or anything like that to let staff know that, you know, this pump's down and this thing. And because of the way that slab is, we're not gonna get the water draining to those anyway, so we're gonna have to, you'd have to do a lot of work to make that system work down there as well. Including, you know, some pumps sitting on a slab floor is gonna draw down to about an eighth of an inch. So we'd have to start with wells in there to be able to get the pumps in to get the water down into the wells to keep it totally dry, 'cause an eighth of an inch is gonna throw off mold too.
Well, it doesn't, it's not, not a pitched floor, it's a flat floor.
Exactly. Unfortunately, it's not an easy situation. But we feel you have good facts now at least to decide how you wanna move forward.
You know, the thrust is, remains and will continue to be that the lowest cost that we're suggesting is likely just that. It's probably going to be artificially low. Everything we've done the last several years, we go through an exercise just like this to try to estimate the cost and then it comes in thirty, forty percent higher anyways and we get out for bid. And when you get into the project, you start doing the work, it goes even higher. You guys have experienced that with every project we've done the last three or four years. There's a very tight market out there for supply of contractors, so I would suggest that the numbers we're looking at tonight are likely conservative. You know, it's probably gonna be, but you know, it's, it's hard to say. We're giving you numbers. I'm supremely confident it won't be much less than the numbers we're talking about, no matter how many times we go back out and ask people for numbers or how, how we bid it. But the ideal way to go would be to get the architects and engineers busy putting plans and specs together and getting bids, so we have to do. So we get the bids in and I doubt very much they're gonna be any lower than what you're looking at, probably higher. And then is it worth it to make that investment and still have old buildings when we're done? And probably during the term, which we're gonna be borrowing money to pay this off, during that term, we're paying that debt off, we're gonna need to invest a considerable additional sum probably as other things come up. Roof, the windows, you know, other expensive things that, you know, this becomes a ongoing investment. So I, I don't know that it's a, a good way to go to try to save these buildings. And all the information we get, and, and I can come back to your next meeting with some business case detail, you know, showing what the payback is on the rent so you're likely to get. But as, you know, we've already run some spreadsheets and look at the amortization at a certain percent interest rate and it's, it's hard to support it being a good business decision. And the difference, Bob and I were talking about this today, the difference, you go, well, how can a, how can a private entity make a go of something like this? Well, when they're done, they've got a salable asset. They've got something they're gonna cash out on the city. We're never gonna sell this. You guys have made that clear. We're always gonna hold on to it. So it's not like this is an asset that you're gonna sell and get your investment back. You're just always gonna keep renting it out and hope that you can eventually get the money back that you've put into it. And right now, we've just gotten horribly burned because we were just paying this thing off this year. We were finally done paying it off. This year, we would've finished and we're coming up short. So I would propose, I don't know what's gonna happen in fifteen years, but if you invest again for another fifteen-year period with a big investment, chances are before that fifteen-year gets here, something else is gonna come up and you're gonna be back in it again. And one thing we haven't talked about at all here is the projections are, that everything I've heard is eleven inches higher this time next year than where we're at right now. That's a guess. Could be considerably more than that, it could be less. But if it is more than that, you might be in a situation where you will wish you hadn't have built anything down here at this time with the uncertainty about water levels. You know, we may not be at the high watermark yet. If that water comes up over the edge of that boardwalk and gets into this building area, it's not gonna be a very suitable environment for retail sales for at least a couple of years. Just some things to think about. I'm not, I'm just being realistic, I think.
And my comment about the, talking with the structural engineer was that building C looked like it might at least be feasible to deal with, but A and B I don't think are. I mean, your, your lower end of repairing the building and getting some more life out of it could be done because it's not so, so badly damaged. Whereas I think buildings A and B are that badly damaged. So, and then it's just a question of, is there a business case for keeping building C? Whatever cost it might be. I, I don't think I would investigate A and B any further in terms of trying to save them. I think the only thing left is, can you make a business case for putting sixty to a hundred thousand dollars into building C? And if they can't do that, then I guess you give up on that one too.
Well, we'll, we'll run a bunch of numbers for you to look at this week and next week before your next meeting.
As far as A and B, I'm done thinking about them. It's just a question of what, what are we gonna put in that land?
I agree. I think, yeah. Yep, I agree.
From the numbers I've seen, I've pretty much come to that same conclusion that A and B were already a foregone, you know, deal. C was about the only one that looked like it might have a, a chance of turning into something. But, you know, even seeing these numbers now when you're looking at, you know.
Been talking with, even Stu Volmer said the same thing, you know, basically when you, if you look at the information they provided, it's about the same thing that they're too far gone to even, to even try to.
Yeah, I wish I better knew the three guys, sorry.
Yeah, I know, I hear you.
That might make it easier for you, Pat.
On the, what, what Abin Marsh has put together here for us, you know, helping us understand these numbers, the sixty-six to a hundred and sixteen thousand, does that include new windows and flooring?
On that one for sixty-six to a hundred and sixteen, that is not new. That is new flooring. That is not new windows.
And had the windows ever been replaced there? Or are those old windows? Yeah. Yeah, so I, I'm thinking we'd wanna, if we were gonna put the money in, we'd wanna, you know, that's thirty years ago, it's probably time for new windows. So you'd be looking at new windows, new flooring. I'd wanna make sure that, and what I'm saying is that a hundred and sixteen is probably pretty light. But we'll, we'll take a deeper dive into that particular structure, make sure we're confident with, with some numbers. You know, we'll run some projections out, what kind of rental revenue we can expect to see over the next, I'm using fifteen years because I don't know if it's, you know, we, when we look at our assets and we go off for bonds and things, you know, if you look at a, a bridge, you usually get forty years out of that and different buildings, but this building's already, you know, the way it was built and it's already got, Kelly was saying, what, eighty-five it was built?
No, so we occupy your name for a building.
Building C?
Oh, really?
Building C was maybe a year later or so?
Um, it was eighty-six.
Eighty-six were the plans we saw, yeah. That's where that came from. That's where the eighty-six came from.
It's thirty-four years old, so if we put fifteen years into it, it's gonna be a fifty-year-old building. And I don't know if these were built to be permanent waterfront structures and maybe they are. I mean, the nibbles has been there a long time down on the waterfront, I don't. So. We'll get, get you more detail on that and I, it sounds like we're ready to place a resolution on your next agenda to advise the tenants of buildings A and B that were invoking that destruction clause formally and terminating all leases.
I believe so.
And then Pat, if you wanna get us a list of everything you wanna do to C, we'll get you a cost estimate, windows, all that sort of thing put together for you.
Okay. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Well, thank you. So now we are to our final call to the audience. So if anybody would like to address counsel on any topic, please come forward and do so now.
I wasn't paying attention during the first hearing, or the first public comment. That's why I'm still here. All of the Chinook Pier friends of mine. I actually just wanted to let the council know that Gary Boyd and Ann Hiroki and I have been working together to develop an organizational committee to try to bring the East, what's used to be the East Town Association back to life. So we're looking at the bylaws. We probably are going to change the name from East Town to East End. We've been coordinating with the city. There's no agreements currently that we have with you for that. We've been coordinating with the state and IRS to figure out if we have a 501(c)(3) status and we're kind of working through all that. I say all that to say we'd like to invite you to a meeting we're having next Monday at five to seven-thirty at Oddside. We've invited a number of different business owners from that area and residents that have shown interest. Just to get the conversation started, what we'd like to do, the three of us are what we've coined an organizational committee. We'd like to re-establish a board, get an elected board for that and start working towards having some organization and structure and goals within that neighborhood or business association. For now, it's just East End Association. That's all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Again, Dave, with Grand Haven Beach Company. So if I heard Pat correctly, it sounds like the resolution could possibly terminate the leases at Chinook Pier. I guess I don't know if I can ask a question during this time, but what would that impact have on us being temporary at Depot, but we don't have a home in two years to relocate to? That's, I mean, for me, I mean, I'm brand-new. I'm gonna be, I'm not putting in fifty grand, but I'm putting in money, starting a business and then in two years, I mean, I don't wanna close. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is not your responsibility, but, you know, how can we narrow this all down and get those answers together and expedite that so we know, why am I gonna start a business, you know, get following for two years and then I'm done? I don't wanna do Main Street. It's not my, my demographic, my traffic pattern, so I don't know if that's discussable or not, but.
Yeah, I think it's very, it's absolutely necessary that everybody stays engaged and involved and talks through this whole thing, 'cause we don't have answers. We gotta find them together. And I, I hope, and you've been very kind with your comments about how we're trying to behave. We're trying to act very rationally and supportive of our tenants, not like a regular capital-driven landlord, but a, a community-driven city council saying, you know, this, you know, the bottom line isn't the only thing in evidence here. So I, I think there's likely, if we decide to do something different at Chinook Pier, there's gonna be direction from council. Let's engage the whole community. Let's have a thoughtful extended process through the summer. Let's find out what everybody really wants to see down there. And it's likely, everybody is used to having commercial presence down there in that location. And I've heard mostly support for that thought process, so. What do we put back in there? Does it make sense to use the existing piles that are there and build right back there or do something completely different? What about these pop-ups? Is that a concept that makes sense to us? Do we wanna try that? So I, I think you'll see, but right now, there, nobody has an answer for that. If I, I wish I did.
If I could just add one last thing, as I reiterate, reiterate what I said I think last meeting was, is to engage with the current, like the charters, the miniature golf, even the paddle boats, pub thing. How would that affect their business if that space is no longer, 'cause that might be, the draw might be the whole attraction as a whole. If you have an amusement park and you take out your roller coaster, do people come for just the Ferris wheel and, and the carousel? So, and it's not, that's actually me just being objective and saying, you know, what are the things? You say, you know, we're saying, well, obviously there's some things to consider, what people want, but it's also what the negative impact can be if that is not there. And that's the opportunity cost. There's cost both ways, but what's, what's worse down the road, if we lose other businesses down there and they're not making money, it's, you know, it's a lot to consider and that's a, it's a big decision, a lot of information, so. Again, guys, thank you so much for everything. I know it's a big, tough decision, but I hope for the best for all of us, so, thank you.
Thanks. We're kind of making those up as we go, you know.
Ross from Dairy Green. I, I do wanna, you know, as you were talking about buildings A, B and C there, I made a brief point about it before, you know, in saying, yes, those buildings are separate from each other. Yes, building C is different where I'm located. But my survival is partially dependent on what happens in those other buildings or lack of other buildings or construction going on or destruction going on down there. Let's say if, if, if we were still in building C or something like that, you know what I mean? Or whoever may be in building C. Obviously, we're, we're trying to talk about the depot, you know what I mean? That's a fear from, from, from a perspective being over there, that you're on an island at, at that point. So the buildings sort of, in a sense, yeah, they kind of survive together or they, in a sense, they kind of die together too. I don't know if that's, that's really the proper perspective. I know I made a different case for that two weeks ago. But, but you know, there's, there's, yeah, there's been a lot of information the last two weeks for sure for all of us and stuff, you know. So just trying to have a resolution there, so it's like, ah, where, you know, where, where's everybody landing, I guess, you know, and stuff like that. If we can, hopefully by next two weeks, we can have a resolution on some of those things like that for everybody, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? You stuck around, speak up.
Thank you, all of you. I do very much appreciate your time and it is way past our bedtimes. I am Kelly from Temptations. Sorry, forgot for the record. One of the things we talk about is being, you know, making back our money and unfortunately, in this situation, there, there are going to be a lot of us who are out and unfortunately, I think the city is a little bit. And unfortunately, I think the city is a little bit too. And, and I hear, how are we gonna make it back and how are we gonna, you know, make this up? And, and I appreciate, I'm a businesswoman and it, it, I, it's not a hobby, right? And unfortunately, this was a really awful incident. And, um, I don't know that for a couple of years, any of us are gonna make any money and it's gonna cost us some money. So I appreciate the honesty and the cooperation, um, as we work through this together. So thank you for keeping us all involved and for trying to make it better for all of us. So, thank you for your time, good night.
Anybody else? We are adjourned.
Meeting is ended, go in peace.